I'll try again in a few minutes where it normally comes up with teams.
Mr. McGinley, voting.
Thank you.
Now I got in, but it's doing the same thing with just connecting, connecting, connecting.
Okay, I'm sending you a link to your email. Once you click that, you'll have to accept, and I'll be able to see your screen here. We can take care of it.
I was sharing everybody.
Thank you. Well, we got everybody aboard now, so 6:01.
You're sending it to my email, Jared?
Yes, that's correct.
I didn't get anything yet.
It probably hasn't went through yet. You should see it in a second.
I got the one with your phone number, but oh, that's it. Oh, there it is.
Okay, perfect. If you click that link and accept any prompts, they'll be able to see your screen. We'll start the recording whenever you're ready, Tim, and let everybody in.
One more minute, Jared, then we can, you can start. Let everybody in, please.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Sharon, I'm able to see that. I'll start after we let everyone in here, and I'll get that going for you.
Okay, Jared, you can start the recording and let everybody in from the lobby, please. Is everybody in, Jared?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good. Okay, the time is 6:01. We're going to call the meeting order. We're going to begin with a pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I'd ask everybody to stand where they're located and evolve with the pledges of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Ms. Lawrence, roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haug?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radell?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Going down to recognitions and ceremonial proclamations. Normally around this time of the year, the manager has a ceremony in the rotunda honoring people for their years of service with the county. Unfortunately, with the situation that we're presented with this year, that's not going to be able to be done. So as a result, he has requested that we do proclamations for three employees or 40-year employees with the county, which is a tremendous amount of time. The first name that we're going to recognize would be Rhonda Adams. She's an employee with the area agency on aging. Ms. Rozelle is on with us. I've asked Ms. Rozelle if she would provide some comments in regards to Ms. Adams. Ms. Rozelle?
Hi, Mr. McGinley and County Council. Thank you so much for having me today. We are very proud to recognize Rhonda Adams, who has been with the area agency on aging since February of 1980. In those 40 years, she's been a tremendous asset to the agency with the many duties that she has performed in her position as an administrative assistant. Rhonda lends administrative support to our 17 active adult centers, which are located in both Luzerne and Wyoming counties. She's involved in many aspects of the centers, including distributing supplies, helping to organize center events, including the annual dinner dance and active aging days. She also helps coordinate staff trainings such as voter registration every year and updating the Active Adult Center website so that everyone can keep abreast of what's going on throughout the centers. A significant part of her position has also been coordinating the state farmers market voucher program. This program provides the monetary vouchers for eligible seniors to use at the local farmers markets. So under normal circumstances, Rhonda coordinates all of that at our 17 active adult centers, but of course with COVID that had to be changed this year, and everything was done via mail, and she did an outstanding job. We were able to provide 9,124 seniors with vouchers. Rhonda is a very valuable employee for all of the reasons that I've mentioned. Really what makes her stand out above everyone is her thoughtfulness and the kindness with which she performs her duties every day. She's always willing to assist anyone with any programs that are, that we're doing at the agency, and really we're so proud to say that she's chosen to stay with the agency for the past 40 years. She actually this morning gave me her, her retirement letter. So kind of, you know, in March, she's going to retire in March, so we're really happy for her and again, very proud that she's chosen to spend those 40 years with us. So thank you again for recognizing Rhonda and for allowing me to say a few words.
Thank you. Obviously, the council is very proud of Rhonda and her achievements over 40 years. That's an accomplishment in itself. So we wish her well in her retirement. That was unknown to anyone until this morning.
Thank you.
We wish her well in her retirement. Good, good luck and good health. Our second employee with 40 years of service is Attorney Joseph Jaeger, and he works currently in Luzerne County Public Defender's Office. And Attorney Greenwald is on the line, and he would say a few words in regards to Attorney Jaeger.
Well, thank you, Mr. McGinley. I just want to say good evening to everyone. I'm Stephen Greenwald. I'm the chief public defender. Excuse me, I want to thank everyone and especially council for the opportunity to say a few words about Joe Jaeger. It's actually my honor and my pleasure to do this. As everyone is now aware, Joe is a 40-year detainee, we call it basically, of the Public Defender's Office. He has been a stalwart of the Public Defender's Office for as long as I can remember, and I've been there for 20, almost 27 years. Joe's tried dozens and dozens of cases, from homicides to maybe retail theft cases. Each case that comes across his desk, I know gets Joe's undivided attention. Each client gets the time and attention that they deserve. I've seen Joe work on these cases. I've worked with Joe on these cases, and I can attest to that. If you do know Joe, if anybody knows Joe, you know, he kind of just quietly goes about his business, never really looks for much attention. He does occasionally stop to ruffle people's feathers. I think he gets a little bit of pleasure out of that, and sometimes people actually need to have their feathers ruffled. So I always appreciate that out of Joe. Very shortly, as far as I know, he's going to be the eldest statesman in the Public Defender's Office, and I know that he is now and for the remaining time that he's there, he'll be a source of inspiration for the less experienced attorneys. He'll be a source of advice. I know he'll be a source to share his insight and, and his guidance. If you know Joe, again, he's kind of quiet, so that's really all I have to say. I know that he does very much appreciate you recognizing him, and I, on behalf of myself and I, behalf of Joe, I thank council and I thank Mr. Pedry for this recognition.
Thank you. And the third person who has 40 years of service is a young lady who works in the District Magistrate's Office, 11-1-01, with Judge Richard J. Cronauer, Virginia Marka Ravich. Virginia is there, like I said, over 40-plus years. District Justice Cronauer was not able to be with us this evening, but he has indicated that she has been a stalwart in that office for many, many years and appreciates all her efforts and services as a member of that magisterial district office. Again, we recognize Virginia for all her years of service and wish her well, and Magistrate Cronauer indicates that we're going to have a little ceremony at the magisterial office also to honor her for her years of service. So we want to say thank you again, and we look forward for many more years. Moving on to our next item under the agenda, additions and deletions from the voting session agenda. Do we have any?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, Steve Urban.
Speak up, please. Go ahead.
I'd like to remove from the agenda number two, number three, number four, and number six tonight. Six, I would prefer to move it over to the work session if possible.
Well, how the members feel, let's see how, how many people would like to remove number two? Indicate by saying aye.
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 Two big people? Aye.
Aye, vote as well.
Think we should just take a roll call.
Yeah, we could take a roll call. On the number two, Ms. Lawrence, roll call to remove number two from the agenda. You vote yes, we remove it. If you vote no, it stays on the agenda.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
So sorry. No.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Oh.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Six yes, five no.
Okay, it's removed from the agenda. Number three, motion to adopt the ordinance designated processing and disposal facilities, providing waste flow control requirements of direct municipal waste or designated processing and/or disposal facilities and providing penalties for violation of this ordinance. If you vote yes, it stays on, if you vote yes, it'll be withdrawn from the agenda. If you vote no, it stays on the agenda.
Mr. McGinley, this is Dave Pedry. Can I, can I ask why you want to remove this particular one from this agenda?
Because we have a motion for Mr. Urban to do that.
Can I ask Mr. Urban why he wants to remove this particular one? Is there information they need or something like that, or?
Well, there's, there's a lot of questions about it, so I, I think we need to move this over to a different session. I don't think we need to proceed tonight.
Well, we have a timeline on this one also, but that's, if you vote yes, it's removed. If you vote no, it stays on the agenda.
Mr. McGinley, what's the timeline? This is Linda.
End of the year.
End of the year. Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Oh.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Six yes, five no.
It's removed. Number six, motion to adopt the resolution enlarging the Stoffer Point slash Grandview Drive Tax Increment District.
Mr. McGinley, you missed number four first.
I thought you said two, three, and six. I'm sorry. You say two, three, four, and six?
Yep.
Okay. Number four, motion to adopt the resolution adopting Luzerne County 2021 Solid Waste Management Plan. If you vote yes, it's removed. If you vote no, it stays on the agenda. Roll call, please.
Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Oh.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Seven yes, four no.
Okay. Moving down to number six, motion to adopt the resolution enlarging the Stoffer Point slash Grandview Drive Tax Increment Program. If you vote yes, it gets removed from the agenda. If you vote no, it stays on the agenda. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Uh, no.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Oh.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
That stays on the agenda. Anything else?
Hello?
I don't know who was speaking. Somebody sent a low?
Yes. Is it on the agenda now?
Excuse me, who is that speaking?
My name is, my name is Sam Troy. Can I comment on the agenda items?
We're not there yet, but we will be shortly, Sam. Hang on.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Hang on. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. McGinley, I have an addition.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Griffith.
I'd like, I'd like to bring the item number three from the work session over to the voting session, the motion, the resolution of reprimand.
Okay. So we have a request to bring the item that's located currently on the work session, bring it over to the voting session, correct, Mr. Griffith?
That's correct.
Okay. Roll call, please. All people who would like to have it taken to the voting session, indicate by saying yes. If you would like to leave it on the work session, say no. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Oh.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No. Okay.
Four yes, seven no.
Thank you. So now that we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendment says voted on.
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck, we have a second for Ms. Houck.
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Mr. Griffith noted as opposition. Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
It's Sheila. The only thing I wanted to say, I, I thought we had a discussion, and maybe I was wrong, that, for instance, Walter, I'm sure he didn't do this on purpose, but, you know, I had reviewed all those amendments yesterday, I think it was, and then I guess there were a whole slew of them that came in, and I just thought we had to get them in by a certain amount of time. I mean, in this case, we have to do them. I mean, it's part of the budget process.
Ms. Sedman, when we get to that part, we'll discuss that, but at this point, we're just talking about the agenda.
Okay.
All right, and first, we need a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting.
So moved, Linda.
Okay, we have a second for Ms. Houck.
Second, Sheila.
Okay, Ms. Sedman, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carried. We need another motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Most, do we have a motion?
So moved, Ms. Sedman.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second for Ms. Sedman?
Second, Liam.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, any abstentions? None heard, motion carried. Now we're at public comment. Mr. Troy, I think you had chimed in a little earlier. You can comment on agenda items at this time.
That is star six to unmute. I believe that might have been his number that was muted there. We were getting some heavy background noises.
Mr. Troy, if you're on the line and you were muted, star six, nine, is that what he said, Jared?
Uh, star six.
Just star six, sorry. Thank you. Mr. Troy? Mr. Troy?
Hello?
Hello, who's that?
Can you hear me all right, Mr. McGinley?
Uh, it's kind of weak. If you could speak a little louder, maybe a little closer to the phone, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. You have your four.
I certainly will attempt to speak louder.
Thank you.
I want to just comment on a couple of the agenda items, at least from what I understand. The amendments that Mr. Griffith offered, I want to commend him for doing that regarding the, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Mr. Troy.
Uh, suspending the, having the non-union employees sacrifice, that was not, none of this was voted on yet, correct?
We didn't get to the agenda yet. No, sir.
Right. Well, this, that's why you're taking comments, of course. So I'm, anyway, I want to express my, I want to commend Walter for putting this forward, and I think consistently with a lot of other citizens who had commented on this issue, I think it's very disturbing that, you know, given the fact that whether a union or non-union, and I know we're talking a lot about a lot, a lot of number, a large number of employees, but in these, in these terrible times of people suffering during the pandemic, not just physically, but economically, some in fact struggling to make ends meet, putting food on the table and paying rent, I, I think it's very, very, it's disgraceful almost to have people who are, I mean, let's face it, most county, I'm sure most county employees, if not all, are economically secure, and I, I think to ask for a raise at this point is, is just not only disturbing, but it's, it, it's just an insult to, to the, to what's, to the people who, you know, are, have a lot of integrity and are trying to make ends meet, you know, don't, do not even have jobs. So I want to commend Walter for that, and I hope council will see fit, and I know there's a large majority here that probably objects to this, but I, I hope council sees that, to vote in favor of Walter's amendments and deny these people these raises, since as he points out, they've already got raises in the last couple of years. The only, the only thing I would comment further on this is that this doesn't go far enough that hopefully, I don't know how many other employees about, approximately, what, 1,800 in the county, something like that, union and non-union. It's a large bureaucracy, and I think there could be other sacrifices made so that the county could avert any forthcoming fiscal crisis and get its, and get its fiscal act together better, even though there has been no tax increase, which we all appreciate it. But things look very gloomy for the future fiscally, and I just want to make one more point, and I will hang up, but regarding the TIF, I understand there's a TIF proposition on the, on the agenda tonight for Stoffer Heights, is it? Am I correct?
Stoffer Heights, Stoffer Point.
Stoffer Point. I want to, I want, I hope council again will see the light on this issue and deny this TIF. This is another situation, as I see it, an example of corporate welfare, where people who have money, who are economically advantaged, are trying to enhance their economic advantage at the expense of the common taxpayer. And I object to this sort of thing, which has been going, which goes on in other parts of the county, I realize. People could say, well, this is, this is par for the course, this is what, the way it's done, and I don't agree. I think the line has to be drawn, and this, this TIF should be denied.
Thank you.
And I hope council will see the light. You're welcome. I will call back later, I hope.
You're welcome, too. Other members of the public, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is in regards to the Stoffer Point TIF. As a member of the Board of the Redevelopment Authority, the last meeting, or the meeting before, actually, I should say, the Board unanimously voted on the conditional approval for the addition for Pittston City on the conditions that, number one, there'd be a written legal opinion from DCED regarding the going forth over the 20-year limit, even though the TIF is at 17 years currently under the original approved plan. That was the first condition. Second condition was that Mr. Tirana had to make up, had to be alongside our director, Mr. Riley, to go back to the original taxing bodies and make the same presentation as per the TIF statute, and I would direct the solicitors to look under section, I'm going to see here, section 5A8, which says, "The governing body of the municipality creating the Taxing Increment District may at any time subject to the provisions of Section 6C, adopt an amendment to a project plan which shall be subject to approval in the same manner as the original project plan." That's what the law says. So I would, I would ask the council to table, keep this on the table and not consider this tonight, as the Director of the Redevelopment Authority must accompany the developer to request the amendment for the original plan. That's what the TIF statute says. So, and also, Mr. Chairman, you and the manager know very well what, what could happen on adding another participant to an original TIF plan. We all remember what happened with Highland Park and Coal Street. So I just want you to keep that in mind when considering this, okay? That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other members of the public, please.
Ron Knapp.
Mr. Knapp, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman McGinley, and thank you, council men and women, for listening on this important subject that feels important. This is in regards to public comments on agenda, I need public comment. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Can everybody hear? I wanted to address county council on what I feel is a disservice to individuals who do not have the ability to listen in on county council meetings and have to refer to the meetings minutes recorded from last meetings. One example from Luzerne County Council meetings on the 24th of November is when Mr. Raybo commented on budget amendments associated with new COVID relations, legislature, which was passed by Governor Wolf. This is quite vague. Mr. Raybo's comments were not clearly stated or expressed in the documentation that was presented from the men of the last meeting. The second example I feel especially important is when I addressed county council on the 24th about the sale of the juvenile detention center. What is written in public comments from me is as such, Ron Knapp, nanny Coke, in parentheses, commented verbally regarding sale of juvenile detention center. What is written in public comments from me is as such, Ron Knapp, nanny coke in parentheses, commented verbally regarding sale of the juvenile detention center. Again, this misses the mark on what a concerned citizen might want to learn about the public's concerns about what is best for the county as a whole and the taxpayers' wallet. I say it should not be sold because there's probably, would be the need for the property when there's a need to expand on the prison building itself. Now, one could argue that there is a recording of the whole meeting, and the concerned citizen could just view the meeting. The unfortunate thing about this is not everyone has the time to view the meetings in its entirety. Because they do not have time to begin with, it is a disservice to have, not have the minutes with the public comments documented for the concerned citizens who do not have the time to view the meetings recording. Some, some of these meetings go for a lengthy amount of time, and it's, it's a disservice for a person to have to look and view the video recording or the, the recording of those meetings, uh, to, including hours of time before public, the public gets a chance to comment, and they don't have the time to do that. So I think the public comments should be more explicit, more transparent. That's just my opinion. And, uh, I wanted to concur with what Walter Griffith stated about raises.
Okay.
They don't have raises at this time.
Thank you.
Uh, because a lot of people are hurting. Thanks for your time.
Other members of the public, please.
Mr. Manta.
Brian Dwyer, Larkson.
Okay, Mr. Manta first, and then Mr. Dwyer. Go ahead, Ms. Manta.
Okay. As, as far as I can see, uh, the county's sitting on a big pot of money, okay? And the, the money that they're sitting on is collecting interest, correct? Every bank has interest-bearing accounts. And for the county to ask for a raise for the employees is very, very, very disheartening. My opinion, and this is my opinion only, if they could sit there and just thank God that they have a job, and they're not unemployed or looking for a job, that, that, that is the biggest part of this whole thing. Let them look at the mirror, look at themselves in the mirror and say, "Well, do you think I deserve a raise for what I'm doing?" And people that are in the military, police department, ambulance service, doctors, and people on the front lines, they're the people that are really hurting. They're the people that you get double raises. But a county employee that's, that is working in a, a job that has, uh, I'm not gonna say a cushy job, but it, it's a job that they don't have to really worry about, uh, uh, themselves. And they have, they have the means to say, okay, let's tighten our belt, starting from the county manager. Tighten the belt, county manager, because that's where it falls in line. And, and this budget is not a tight-belt budget. There's a lot of things that could have been pulled back, and it weren't pulled back because everybody wants to step up to the plate and say, "Well, I could make, I could make more money this year." You're, you're making it on the backs of the, of the taxpayers. We, the people. You know, you said the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of, of each meeting. But the last seven words of the Pledge of Allegiance are, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Not for just some, for all. And the, and the first three words of the Constitution, "We, the people," are tired of getting tax increases, getting backdoor taxes that are not put on the millage. They're just saying, "Oh, well, we're gonna throw a fee here, and we're gonna throw a fee there." So that's still a tax. Look it up in the Webster's dictionary. Pardon?
Would you wrap up, please?
Yes, sir. And, and I, and I'd like to have, I'd like to, to, to end with this comment of, "Let's look at ourselves in the mirror, folks, and say, can we help other people by not taking a raise?" Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Mr. Dwyer, you have the podium.
Thank you. Um, the last time that this matter was discussed before council and in the public forum, um, I gave some opinions on my own personal financial situation as being a somewhat independent businessperson. And that's a choice I made, and I'm fine with it, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Um, anyone who's a county employee made a choice. They made a choice to take government job for the security and the benefits. And those things tend to show themselves, or shine, if you want to look at it that way, in times like this. And, and I'm not faulting any one of those people who, who did that, that it's fine, I mean, I get it, it's a trade-off. You can go out in the world and make your own money, and whatever you make, you make, or you can, you know, opt for security and a steady paycheck. They're getting a steady paycheck, they're gonna continue to get a steady paycheck. I, as a public citizen of this county, lifelong resident, and a taxpayer of this county, they're just gonna have to forego the pay raise this year, and there shouldn't be any whining or crying about it. It's just that simple, I don't know any other way to put it. Um, along with that position, uh, that would also be my position on the extension of the TIF program, uh, if, if you want to phrase it that way, in the Pittston area. Um, no, I, I, I'm so tired of industry and, and public entities using, or private entities using public money to, to finance their projects. I don't have that available to me. Um, so why should they? I, I don't think that that project should get the extension. Those are my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Okay, moving down to the next item of business, which is the motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty voting session. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Sabin. All in favor indicate by saying you were an aye.
Mr. McGinley on the question first.
Excuse me? There's someone, I gotta speak there and I.
On the questions for the minutes?
Who's that?
Walter.
Now I can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. Um, yeah, and, and before we vote on the minutes, I just want to explain to council why I vote no on the minutes. When I first joined council, I voted yes for the first two or three sessions of the minutes, now I'm voting no. And it's for exactly what Mr. Knapp alluded to in his public comment, is, and I understand these are audio-recorded minutes, but I think we need to be a little bit more, uh, cohesive in our comments on what people are saying, so if they do want to actually go out and look at something, they can. There's no comments on any parts of the votes when it comes time for council to make a comment under the question. So there's nothing in there, if it's a seven to five, a seven to four vote, there's nothing under the, in the minutes that says why, why the members on the question. There's nothing about membership on the question. And, and that is not, does not give a, a good picture of the minutes for the general public when they look at minutes. They see a seven to four vote, they don't see why the four people voted no, or why the seven people voted yes. So I think we need to put a little bit more information in there. I know it takes a little, a lot of work for Sharon, she's got a lot to do, and I certainly empathize with the work that's involved, but we need to put more information in the minutes for some, anybody who wants to look at the minutes to get a better picture of what's happening at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No. No.
Mr. Griffith and Mr. Urban, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. You don't have anything under old business, we move to the next item. Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance, issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note, series twenty twenty-one, and principal amount not to exceed sixteen million dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Sabin, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
On the question, Mr. Swets, are you on the call here?
I am available, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, you want to, you talked about this our last meeting in the, uh, work session, I don't think you had some of the information at, at that time, you were waiting for the bids to come back. You want to give us a narrative, please?
Sure, I will. So at the time the bids came back, we got four bids. Um, administration, along with P F M, we reviewed them, picked the lowest bid, which was Webster Bank. Uh, they finalized the rate today at point six zero eight percent. Uh, to give some background, you know, a little bit more than a half a percent, a few years ago, we had nobody been on a tran, and not too long after that, we were happy with two point five percent. So the budgets and the audits do have meaning, and the work that we do has meaning to not just people in the county on the call and the council, but far ranging for any kind of financial transactions we have. We kept it the same at sixteen million dollars. I think I said before, if it was a pre-COVID environment, I would have looked to lower it, but this is our one chance, this is the amount, we can actually borrow up to twenty-two million, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna take sixteen million, we feel that's efficient. And just as a little bit of background, you know, if somebody were to get a, on the fees alone, the bank fees alone, and the charges of the interest, you're talking one point six million dollars at a little over five thousand dollars. I think anybody in the county would take that deal for six months. So I'm very proud of the process, I'm very proud of the bids, and we'll have an amendment for next week, because I believe there's around two hundred and fifty thousand in the budget. So also, that's gonna be another one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that council can move to the reserve or somewhere else, uh, even including the fees for P F M, the underwriting and everything. So we'll have it finalized, and that's a quick summary.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a question for Mr. Swets. This is Linda. Uh, Mr. Swets, uh, what's our running total from our audits of the, um, the, um, you know, we were in a deficit position for a while, but now we are actually in a surplus position. What's our running total of that surplus?
I, the surplus, we were at about sixteen point seven percent, sixteen point seven million.
So is it necessary to borrow sixteen million?
Yeah, no, and I, I think we, I'll go into some detail before. So basically, the audit number is the difference between the revenue and expenses, and this isn't just for you, it's for all of council, I know we talked about this before. So that is completely different from cash, whether the county had one dollar in account or a million dollars, that's the year-over-year cumulative shortfall. So the year-over-year shortfall before we started, uh, any positive audits was over sixteen million short. Since that time, uh, we got to zero a few years ago, and we're, we're probably at around eleven million of the positive. Now, we've only dropped the tran by two or three million, but if you recall, we had no investments when Home Rule started. Uh, we've had anywhere from ten to fifteen million dollars at investments. So we're taking a loan, and to make up some of this cash flow for the time that tax bills don't come in, we have investments. And it was one of our goals and one of the things on P F M's checklist on the five-year plan of investment income. So it's not just a one-to-one, because that would be about twenty-eight million dollars, and I totally understand that, but we're investing money, uh, until the time that this tran is paid off, and that's why it's not one-to-one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, it's Sheila Bryan. You said there were three other bids?
That's correct.
Who were they buying, what were those bids?
Uh, I, I can send you the sheet, I don't have the sheet right in front of me. Uh, it was M and T bid, uh, Fidelity bid, and P N C Bank bids. So there was four bids. I have the sheet with the totals, I could send it over, I should have put it in the pack, and I thought I did, and if I didn't, I'm sorry. But I, I did have that summary sheet.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. McGinley, Dave Pedry.
Go ahead, Mr. Pedry.
I just want to say, uh, listen, for, for the County Council members who have been on Home Rule since the very beginning, uh, if, if you recall, just a couple of years ago, we couldn't even get a tran. Uh, we had a, we had a call begging borrow in order to get a tran, and now we have four major banks offer us a, uh, a less than one percent, uh, sixteen million dollar loan. Uh, is, is truly impressive, and it goes to show the hard work of County Council and County Administration, uh, that we've rid this financial ship, um, here in, in Luzerne County. Uh, this is as if I walked into the bank today and said, "I would like one point six million dollars, uh, for six months, and I only want to pay you five thousand dollars in interest." That's what, that's the type of deal we're getting now, because of the hard work, um, of this County Council. So, um, this, this shows the steps that had to be taken, and we're now seeing these things come to fruition. And I just want to make sure, um, I, I want to commend especially the council members who were there from the beginning on that.
Anyone else have questions?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Um, the, the, the only question that I have in, moving forward into next year, is I know every year, we, we go out, every year since Home Rule, as Mr. Pedry just alluded to, is that we, we do go after a tran. You know, I, I don't understand why we always wait until the last minute, and now we're here, we just finally get the documents today about the loan to review for council, and it's always, you know, run around with your hair on fire at the last minute trying to figure out what's going on, because we just got the documents, much like we did with the repository stuff today. It's, it just boggles my mind why we can't do this stuff in advance and give coun, council the opportunity to read these documents before we have to vote on them. Again, this is the same thing every time. We had the R F P put out last week, and now this week we get the documents to vote on. Why, why can't we put the R F P out in November? You know, why, why can't we just move this thing up by two weeks or so? Why do we wait till the last minute? I think we already know by November that we're gonna have to take out a tran. So I would, I would, I would like to have that courtesy extended to council and moving, moving into the future years, if we could. Thank you.
Well, the only comment I would have, Mr. Griffith, on some of, of some of that is, timing is everything, and as you know, uh, interest rates do have a tendency to fluctuate somewhat, and obviously, this year, I think the interest rates are extremely low in comparison to historical values. So we're very fortunate, but I think what, uh, Mr. Swets and Mr. Pedry alluded to, the fact that the county has a much better financial picture, uh, we have a much better situation when we go out and ask for these kinds of, uh, information regards to a tran, so. You know, if we can move it up a little bit, that'd be great, but I do think you have to watch your timing, and you have to watch the interest rates as they fluctuate.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna make much difference in two weeks.
I disagree with you, Mr. Griffith, I've seen wide swings inside of.
I, I, I would expect that, but I'm just saying, I think the R F P process.
You have to recognize that.
Process could be able to do it. The R F P process could be bumped up.
We have a motion for Ms. Sabin, second, second for Ms. McDermott. Roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Sabin?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Two, three, and four items have been eliminated, so we're down to number five. We have a motion to approve a resolution allowing Luzerne County Treasurer's Office to collect taxes for Newport Township for the twenty twenty-one calendar year. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Sabin, do we have a second for Ms. Sabin?
Second, Linda.
Ms. How. On the question. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sabin?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you.
You have it.
We're down to number six, motion to adopt a resolution enlarging the topper, Stoffer Point slash Grand Route Drive Tax Increment District. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Chris.
Mr. Perry, do we have a second for Mr. Perry?
Second, Vog.
Mr. Vog. On the question.
Uh, Steve here.
Uh, I think, before we get in, one second. Is it Mr. Tirana? Is Mr. Tirana? Is it Mr. Toronto? Is Mr. Toronto on the line?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Toronto, uh, you were with us back in July, I think. Am I correct?
Correct.
In the summer months, correct?
Yes.
You want to bring it, give us an update on where this is at this point? I think at that point you still had some work to do with the Redevelopment Authority as.
Correct.
If you research me correctly.
Chairman McGinley, it was my understanding that Andrew Riley, the director of the Redevelopment Authority was supposed to present this.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm, uh, on the line.
Thank you.
Councilors, um, as Mr., as Attorney Toronto has indicated, I'm here to introduce a proposal to enlarge the staff for stopper point development. Um, as you were told several months ago, stopper points of one hundred and eighty unit uh, townhouse style, uh, development with one hundred and forty units to be erected in Pittston Township and forty units to be erected in Pittston City. Currently, there are over forty units that have been built with, uh, the majority of them located in Pittston Township. Uh, in two thousand and eight, the tax increment district was established to assist in installing the infrastructure that would, uh, ultimately support the development. The district was established, um, exclusively for those one hundred and forty units that were to be built in Pittston Township. Uh, however, earlier this year, the other taxing bodies, the Pittston Area School District, Pittston City and Pittston Township approved resolutions that granted the enlargement of the district to include the forty units that will be built in Pittston City as well as approved the extension of the TIF term to equal the time required for the full repayment of the TIF obligation. All the resolutions that were adopted were approved unanimously. Uh, more recently, the Redevelopment Authority Board approved the request of the developer with some conditions. It is the opinion of the Redevelopment Authority Board Solicitor that these conditions have been met and adequately satisfied. Uh, and Mr. Toronto is on the line that can answer any specifics regarding the development and the proposed district.
Thank you. Mr. Toronto, do you want to pick up there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The, the only other point that I would like to offer is that I, I think there's just a misunderstanding in regards to this request. And, and let me first apologize. I, I was diagnosed last week with COVID. So I'm, I'm real weak in my voice. So I apologize if, if you're having.
With your health, that's important.
Yeah, it's, it's not any fun. It's something everyone should take very seriously. I, I didn't realize until I got it. Uh, but in, in any event, the, the major issue involved in this is that we're really saving the taxing bodies' time by allowing this enlargement to occur. I had provided in July the statements and the estimates in regards to how much we are accelerating the term of the TIF by allowing this to occur. We are going to allow the taxing districts to receive the tax revenue streams in a minimum of a five-year period from what would be projected right now and a maximum of twelve years. So this is really a, a helpful request to the taxing bodies. It's not something that is altruistic in regards to the, the developer itself. This is looking back to assist the lenders and the taxing bodies to get the lenders paid as quickly as possible as well as getting the taxing streams running directly to the taxing. So I wholeheartedly believe that this is, this is something that is good for everybody. And then I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Questions from council?
Yeah, this is, uh, Steve.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
So I'm, I'm looking at some of the law, uh, on, on the TIFs and number one, as far as the, the reporting of, of the TIF itself, it says the issuing authority shall report annually on the status of the project, including the amount of annual debt service and the annual value of the incremental tax revenues. We've never seen any of that information as county council. Um, you know, and the powers of the actual Redevelopment Authority is to actually propose the tax increment districts and the bounty, boundaries thereof. So if they didn't approve the boundaries as a board, as a board of five, how can we expand the TIF prior to them actually approving it themselves? So I have a problem with that because the RA needs to approve the boundaries before they, you know, they have the executive director come to us to actually move it forward. You know, there's steps in this process that we're sort of cutting out and, and, um, you know, it also says each, um, affected municipality and school district shall designate a representative to meet with the authority to discuss the project plan and the TIF and shall notify the authority of its designated representative. Well, who on council is our designated representative and then really has been discussing it? Is that you, Tim? Or is it anybody else on, on council?
I have never participated in any discussion.
Well, that's under sixty-nine thirty dot five of the actual TIF law.
So, so council, councilman Urban, if I may answer that.
Well, let me finish, please. And let me, I may just throw out all my, my points. Um, you know, and the term is too, is a twenty-year bond payment. So it says tax, tax incremental bonds or notes may not be issued in an amount exceeding the aggregate project cost. The bonds or notes shall mature over a period not exceeding twenty years from the date of issue. So I'm assuming that the date of issue is in the past. And twenty years from that date of, date in the past may be twenty, twenty oh eight or twenty twelve is twenty twenty-eight or, or twenty thirty-two, not all the way out to twenty forty or twenty forty and beyond. So, you know, you're, you're looking to expand this. But I think, you know, you got to go back to the Redevelopment Authority, get their approval before you come to council and dot your i's, cross your t's and dot your j's in a sense, before you come to us looking for approval on this. I mean, they are the eyes and ears of the redevelopment and they pretty much, you know, um, look at this. And the other thing is is that there should be another public hearing, in my opinion, before we expand the boundaries to allow, I think that's also in the law as well. So, you know, you're an attorney. I think you, you'd want to follow the law to the T, especially on a project so large. And I can't really support this at this point in time because none of that due diligence has been finalized with the, with the Redevelopment Authority. They're still asking for some outstanding issues to be resolved. And you're kind of like circumventing the entire process by coming to us first.
Can I speak now?
Go ahead.
Mr. Toronto? So the, the first part in regard to the twenty-year, um, as Mr. Raabo had made reference earlier, there was an initial requirement by the Redevelopment Authority Board for an opinion from the Office of Chief Counsel of DCED. And I had, after the Redevelopment Authority's meeting, I had contacted an attorney in the Office of Chief Counsel. Uh, she had provided me with the opinion that generally there isn't, an, an ability under the TIF amendment to allow the TIF district to remain open so long as there is no, so long as there's, excuse me, a debt owed under the TIF loan obligation. She told me though, that since this was not a bond issue and the Office of the, um, DCED did not back this particular loan because some of the particular TIF loans that have been done throughout the Commonwealth, the guarantor is actually the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So with that in mind, the Commonwealth Legislature realized that these things could go awry at times. And the, the person who would write and open their check would be the legislature of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So with the TIF amendment basis for the rationale for the change was to allow this to go beyond twenty years so that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania didn't have to bail out these loans. But she told me that since, again, this wasn't a bond issue or a loan that the Commonwealth was backing, that she was unable to provide with an opinion. So I went back to the Redevelopment Authority Solicitor and he instructed me to secure opinions from the other taxing bodies and, and one being the county solicitor uh, had provided an opinion to the Redevelopment Authority, the school district's solicitor, the cities, Pittston City Solicitor and Pittston Township. And they were all in the, the same thread acknowledging that their review of the TIF Act and the amendments to it allowed an extension beyond twenty years. Uh, Shannon Craigel, who, who is the county solicitor even appined that there was instances that she found throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that there was more than one, several instances that the TIF had gone beyond the twenty-year period. And that again, all of these taxing solicitors provided an opinion to the Redevelopment Authority confirming that this, a TIF could have a term in excess of twenty years. The statement that you made about the public hearing and the committees, uh, the solicitors also provided an opinion that stated that the purpose of those public hearings is to determine exclusively if a property is blighted. In order for a property to have any type of TIF designation, the first wave of discussion and determination is if a property is, has been classified as blighted. And the opinions provided by the solicitor stated that since that was already accomplished by way of the initial district being enacted, that it was moot in order to go back and have a public forum in order to reconclude the same instance because when we initially did the TIF, we had the entire project as part of the analysis, not just the Pittston Township section. So it was almost like an ask and answered. So I, I, not that I take offense, but you know, as a lawyer, I do pride myself in dotting all of my i's and crossing my t's. I can assure you that we have done all of our i-doting and t-crossing. Uh, and as Andy Riley had noted a moment ago, uh, it was the, the Redevelopment Authority Solicitor's opinion that we have satisfied the conditions that granted us the approval to allow the Redevelopment Authority to approve this request as well. So I, I, I believe that that is somewhat skewed as well because it is my opinion that I have the Redevelopment Authority's approval in, in order to move forward on this. And that I'm not jumping, uh, over, over one body to get to another.
What, what was their vote of approval?
It was unanimous. And Mr. Raabo made the motion.
As far as changing the boundaries themselves?
Yes, yeah, correct. Changing, allowing the enlargement as well as allowing the extension beyond twenty years. Conditioned upon that there was this opinion letter from DCED, which again, as I mentioned, the county's Redevelopment Authority Solicitor instructed me to secure the opinions of the taxing bodies. Because that was what, both I had a conversation with the attorney in the Office of Chief Counsel and then Gary Toroli, who is the Solicitor for the Redevelopment Authority, he called her as well. And she told him the same thing that she informed me, that the, the best thing to do is get the taxing bodies' authority because they're going to be the ones that have the final say in should this thing get enlarged or not. So your solicitor and the other three taxing body solicitors have all provided an opinion that, that I've done everything that I should have in order to get this approved properly.
Yeah, I mean, the last time we actually heard anything about it though, was when you were here in the summertime. So you know, none of the attorneys at the county had brought anything to our attention, you know, that you just stated. You know, and then, you know, when I look at the law too, it says the governing body of the municipality which will create the the tax incremental district shall hold at least one public hearing in which the interested parties are afford a reasonable opportunity to express their views on the concept, you know, of the TIF. But you're, you know, that's with the, obviously the, the proposed creation of, of a district and the boundaries. But that's, that's the initial okay phase. But when you're going and, and expanding it, you're actually changing the scope of the entire project itself. You know, you're moving the boundary line, you're moving the goalpost. You know, so I think you, you know, out of, and, and basically this, this public hearing, I think should happen before we even approve it. Um, and it says here, notice of the hearing shall be published in accordance with the terms of the act, you know, July third, nineteen eighty-six, you know, sunshine, obviously. So it, it couldn't hurt to put another public hearing out there because you are changing the scope. You're adding an additional municipality into the scope and allowing those individuals to, to weigh in on the actual TIF.
Again, all, all I can respond to that is your county solicitor appined that that is not warranted, not.
County Solicitor doesn't always tell us that. So.
She put it in writing and, and sent it to the Redevelopment Authority.
They didn't send it to writing to council though.
Other members of council?
I don't know if I can provide lots of that.
Other members of council?
Not, Mr. McGinley, Mr. McGinley, I just have one brief comment to make as, uh, you know, I just, I just don't, I don't believe that the county taxpayers need to fund any more projects in the county at this, at this moment. Extending the TIF is not appropriate. And I won't be supporting this TIF either for that reason. I, I just don't think, I think we've already had this TIF in place. Now we're going to go to a Pittston City and extend it into that, into Pittston City. Pittston City has their own Redevelopment Authority. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts here that I don't think the taxpayers need to be funding much as Mr., Mr. Troy alluded to on his public comment is, you know, we have these big developers that are always, and, and Mr., uh, uh, Dwyer as well, you know, the regular person who has a small business can't get any help. He's under COVID. He's got all these problems going on. He can't get any help. And we're going to give some, uh, you know, tax incremental fund to, to a developer. I just don't think it's appropriate, so I won't be supporting it.
Okay. Well, councilman, if I could just respond, just I could put it in perspective. If you allow this to occur, this TIF will be paid off in twenty thirty-two. If you vote no, the TIF is going to be paid off in twenty forty-six. So the, the county's going to have to wait an additional fourteen years to get its tax stream from the, from this project. I, I just want, again, you understand the, the mathematics of, of what is, what your no means. You are taking money out of the county for additional fourteen years by voting no. Voting yes, twenty thirty-two gets this paid off and gets the tax stream running into the county. You, you're actually helping by voting yes.
I, I, and Mr. Toronto, I appreciate that information. It's, that's helpful information to know that that's actually the case. This, this TIF was approved by the commissioners. I, what, at what date was that done? Two thousand and one?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, okay. Two thousand and eight. So, so the commissioners approved this TIF back in two thousand and eight. And so if we approve that, as you said, we paid off sooner rather than, uh, twenty forty-two, I think it was a day, right?
Six.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the information.
Any other council members?
Hey, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Hey, Mr. Toronto, Harry Haas here. Hope you're feeling better with, um, with your malady there. Sorry to get you COVID. Um, just, just a question and you kind of preempted a little bit there talking to Councilman Griffith. So if council chooses not to in, endorse this TIF? In that case, so one, um, one repercussion will be that we'll see the revenue stream actually be delayed. If, if from what I'm saying, I'd, I'd like to hear exactly why that is. But secondly, can't, can't TIFs go forward with just two of the three main taxing bodies? I mean, if the school district and municipalities approve it, then it can still go forward. I mean, obviously the school district is the one that, that, that captures most of the revenue from something like that. So I'm just wondering, does Losern County have to sign on to this? Um, will that have negative consequences for the project?
Yes.
Two-part question.
It, it, it's my understanding that, the latter one first. It, it's my understanding that I need unanimous consent of all the taxing bodies in order to do the change. And then the second one is the, the way that the development has been structured, our first phase of our development comprises of seventy-two units. And we have sold all of the units right now in the first phase of this development. The remaining phase, the, the remaining units in the first phase are located in Pittston City. And that is prohibiting us to go on to the second phase of development that is located in Pittston Township. So our lender is basically telling us that we'd have to wait until sell all of the Pittston City units before we go into our phase two. So, so that's the, the basic crux behind why there is that extra period of time. That we'd have to wait to sell all the Pittston City units before we can go back into Pittston Township. And, and that, that's what was causing this twelve or so year delay. Okay, Mr. Haas. I hope that answered your question.
Mr. Haas, you're muted. I can see on your, on the icon.
Sorry, yeah. Absolutely. Sorry, Mr. Me, amateur mistake here. So I, I just, just to clarify, so what's holding it up is that it's not including Pittston City at this point. That's what's holding up the project?
That, that's, that's what's holding up the, the, uh, acceleration of the repayment of the TIF loan. So that the tax stream revenue can come to the municipality, the, the taxing bodies sooner.
I'm, I'm, and I, I know you came a few months ago and, and you presented this. I'm, I'm I'm just still understanding why. It, it seems like it's, it's reversed. We told Councilman Griffith that actually by saying no to this, you're going to delay the repayment of, of the TIF already. And I'm, I'm, and I, 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 I'm just not following.
Yeah, so again.
I must be all alone. So sorry, other ten members of council.
No, so, so again, the, the basic.
Harry, I have the same concern.
Uh, thanks, Bob.
Mr. Toronto?
I'm a slow learner. If you, if you could, if you could just repeat it, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, so no problem. So, so again, as I mentioned a moment ago, our, our first phase, we have four phases in this development. The first phase of the development comprises of seventy-two units. We have built out the units in Pittston Township that are in phase number one. So we have to now start building our Pittston City units that are in phase one before we can go to phase two in the development. And I, I mentioned in our last discussion that the, we have to put in an additional two million dollars, the developers in order to finalize the infrastructure of the development. The, the TIF loan only supported, uh, four of the six million dollars of infrastructure we're putting into this development. So we have, the four million dollars basically went in to cover all of phase one's work. And then some of the work for phase two, three and four. But we're still two million dollars short in what we need to finalize. and four. But we're still $2 million short in what we need to finalize all of the infrastructure in the development. So we have to sell out all of the Pittston City units to generate the revenue and be in a position that our lender will provide us the finances and our own finances, our own funds, in order to generate the $2 million that is necessary to finish the infrastructure. So the, the request is done so that we have the ability now to finalize the Pittston City units and allow the TIF to continue to be paid down in a frequent fashion that would, that would not allow us by saying no, then we have to sell all the Pittston City units. And I'm estimating it's going to take 12 years or so to do that. And then 12 years from now, we'll have the availability to go out and get into phase two, where, which is all Pittston Township units. And then the tax revenue stream would start generating once again, once those units have been built and sold.
So, okay, so in a nutshell, there's a shortage of capital from your private investors.
No, there, there's not a shortage of capital.
There's a shortage of $2 million to continue the project.
No, we, we, we have, we, we're not short on the money. We, we have money. But then in regards to the sequencing of the development, we have to sell, we, we have approval, we have final approval on phase one of our development. We only have preliminary approval on phases two, three, and four. I, I don't have final approval yet on that, on those sections of the development. So I, I have the ability today to build 72 units that the county has approved and Pittston City has approved to be built out of the 180. As a matter of sequence, once the 72 units get sold, or approximately, so what Walter said in the timing, in, in order to generate a lead here, when we sell 65 units or so in phase one, I'll be able to go back to the planning process in order to get the approval to do phase two. And then we'll start building phase two. And, and complete the infrastructure necessary for phase two. So, so this is just expediting the process to allow the revenue to come out of the Pittston City selling units, the tax revenues that are generated sooner than later.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes, Ms. Haas.
This is Linda. Um, Mr. Toronto, could you just, um, point me to the place in the documents where it says when the, uh, when it, the payments would start to come back to the county? Because I'm having trouble finding, did you say it was 2032?
2032, yeah.
Okay. Could you tell me exactly where that's found?
I, I'm, I'm not accessing your online. It, it was in my July meeting, the work session. I provided the data that provided that 2032 date. But I don't know if the same information was supplied for this particular meeting, but it was.
I believe it was.
I did find, I did find a list of real estate taxes that went through 2046, but I did not find anything that stopped at 2032. I didn't find a document like that.
There was an amortization schedule that was provided in the package that showed the payment of the loan being made. And it had a 2032 date.
Okay. I'll look for it. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, to the attorney.
Go ahead, Mrs. Sneak.
So, repeating those dates again, 2032, that's a yes vote. 2046 is a no vote.
That's, uh, what?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Mr. Toronto confirms that.
That's my estimate, yes.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnley, chill.
Yes, Ms. Sadek.
Angela, how many, how many, um, units have you sold in, I thought you said a little while ago that they've been sold. But how many units have actually been sold in, in part one?
We have 40 units that have currently been sold. And they are partially in Pittston Township and partially in Pittston City.
Out of how many?
Out of 180.
Okay. And, all right.
We, we've had a very good year. We've sold six units already this year, and we have eight units currently under contract. This is by far going to be our best year in, in all 12.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Excuse me?
Um, yes, go ahead, somebody.
You have 72 built right now. You sold 40.
No, we, we have 72 approved to be sold.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anyone else?
If I, I just made a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I just, I, I have a really tough time supporting these kind of measures on behalf of all the, the taxpayers of Luzerne County. Every jurisdiction wants development. Obviously, it's spurred, it helps out with the tax base and helps out the municipality and, and the school district. But, you know, I'm looking at, at just past precedent, you know, with the, um, the, um, uh, the, the Chewy Center down there, right there in Hanover, that this council, the council majority supported that. And that building went up in a flash. And the discussion at the time was, okay, if the county doesn't sign on to this, well, that off the development. And they said, oh, yes, most assuredly, yes. And we saw, so we signed on to it. And, um, obviously, it's, it's a big, wonderful building. We all like development. But I, I just, I just have a hard time that, that a building went up that so quickly. Because again, we've got the government putting its finger on the scale and getting involved in a place that should really be private enterprise. It should be private development, really taking the risk and taking these kind of, of projects on. And I think even if town, Luzerne County stayed out of that particular, um, that deal, that LURD that we signed on, which really was more like a K O Z, but they called it a LURD, more like a K O Z, 10-year tax abatement almost. And we looked at that, and I, I really think that would have still gone up very quick. I don't think anything would have changed because it was really just pennies on the dollar. And I see something like this again. Obviously, I, I want every town in this, in Luzerne County to be developed, but this just seems very convoluted. It seems like it's, it's competing with other private firms that would really take similar risk. And, um, I, I hope you can understand that, Mr. Ron, and, and the rest of the council members. Uh, the average person does not like this stuff. Their tax dollars are being deferred. They're paying their taxes, and it's going on to spur development in, in other areas. And I, again, I'm, I'm just very, very leery about this, but thank you for, uh, listening to my comments.
Then, Councilman Haas, if, if I could just add, we literally use funds to build a public roadway. Th- this development is in between Stoffer Heights, which is partially located in Newstown, Pittston Township, and Butler Street that is located in Pittston City. The residents from Newstown, Pittston Township literally travel daily through our development in order to get to and from Pittston City. But they, they literally were used for public purposes more than private purposes. Like, I can assure you 100%. They, they really, they, they, they serve a great purpose.
Yeah, I, I've seen the project. I remember a few months ago when it was, it was shown to us. The, the design's beautiful. It's right in a, a, a very appropriate spot, right in the middle of, of, uh, byways right there. But again, we're, we're, we're asking the, the taxpayer to, to basically finance this. Hence the name, the TIF.
Mr. McGinnley? It's, it's Linda. It's Linda. Um, if I could just say, I did go back into the July agendas, and I found the 2032 date. Um, so, you, you know, and I, with respect, Harry, um, I appreciate, uh, I also am, you know, not a big proponent of, of these types of things, but, um, right now, this is a deal that was entered into by the commissioners, and we have an opportunity to shorten the term of it. Um, and so I think if we can, can, um, get some tax revenue, um, 14 years earlier than we would if we didn't vote for it, I think it, it's probably a better deal. Thank you.
Right. That's helpful, Linda. Thank you for sharing that.
Anyone else?
Um, Mr. McGinnley.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
Um, I just, since we have like Mark Raybo on here from the redevelopment authority as well, as a member, can we hear from him on his take?
Uh, Mr. Raybo's a member of public care, and he, he did have his opportunity. And Mr. Riley is on, who's the ZECA director.
Well, but he, but he is a, he is a member under oath, you know, as a member, and I'd like to hear from him on his take.
Mr. Urban, I'm sorry. We already heard from him. I think he expressed himself very well at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, I think you're shutting him down.
No, I'm not. He had his opportunity, and I think he's sent you an email, all his information.
Just say, then, you know, with a big project like this, I mean, we're talking about funding houses that are worth between 100 and probably around 180 to $300,000 with our tax dollars. How much i- in, in actual lost revenue, um, or at least money that's being recycled back into this program is the county missing out on, um, over the next, you know, well, up until 2032? Has anybody done an assessment on, on how many millions that we're, we're going to be missing?
Um, Councilman Urban, actually, my analysis was that you had a four, almost a $400,000 windfall by agreeing to this. You weren't losing anything. You were picking up as a net effect compared to what tax revenues you were generating now if you kept the Pittston City in compared to by allowing it to, to go into the TIF. It was a $391,000 or so net windfall by allowing this to happen.
Is it shown anywhere?
It, it was in that same July information that I, I supplied to the, the council.
I mean, I, I know I saw some of that stuff, you know, it was very convoluted as far as the, uh, the statements and things like that.
But that basically was the net effect, 391,000.
In fact, I'm talking, I'm talking real dollars. Like, I mean.
That is real dollars.
That's coming back.
July 14th, July 14th is the agenda, uh, item.
So, so, so we're, we're, that $300,000 is actually going back into the county, into the general fund?
No, that, that's what you're, are going to be saving. Uh, that's what you're going to be getting by allowing the TIF to be expanded. So the 2032, you get the money. It's the difference between the 2032 date and the 2046 date.
Right.
And, and what you would have earned in taxes out of, out of the Pittston City from 2032 to 2046 compared to you getting the tax revenue, full tax revenue stream in 2032.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand. I would have, could have, should have. But right now, we're not getting anything for it. So, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to adopt the resolution by Mr. Perry, set by Mr. Voe. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sneak had a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sneak, did you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I agree.
I'm sorry.
I agree wholeheartedly with, uh, Mr. Haas's assessment, but I also agree with, uh, Ms. Hauck. Uh, that fight should have been in 2008. I totally disagree with getting funding for something like that where Mr. Dwyer, a small business owner couldn't, doesn't have the same source of revenue. But, I mean, that fight was 12 years ago. But, okay, there are my feelings.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up on that. That fight was with the original boundaries back in 2008, not to change, because the commissioners didn't know about that boundary change in 2020.
Okay.
I call a question.
Call a question. Mr. Perry made the motion, Mr. Voe made his second, motion to adopt the resolution, enlarging the Stoffer Point slash Granville Drive Tax Increment, Increment District. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sneak?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Urban?
Um, no.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Abstained due to business relationship.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Seven yes, three no, one abstention.
Thank you. We're down to number seven. Uh, motion to appoint a council member to Luzerne, the County Action Planning Steering Committee, just as a result of the discussion we had at the work session last week in regards to the, uh, steering committee that would be involved with the D E P, et cetera, to set up the, uh, plan, the countywide plan for us, Lackawon County and Susquehanna County. And if you remember, at that point, the Conservation District was the group that was going to be the leader in that particular area. We have a motion.
Mr. McGinnley, before, before you get into, I just received an email from Josh Longmore. Uh, they're going back and forth with, with D E P on a couple of different issues. He's recommending that you guys hold off on appointing anybody at this point. Uh, there's, there are some issues, and he said he'll come in front of council moving forward. Um, I could forward you the email. I think you're copied on it. It's up to you. But it doesn't seem, Mike, you have to do this tonight.
Motion to table, Linda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table, no discussion. And second by Mr. Sneak. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. I really think we should have put somebody on, though, because it'd be good to have county council have a representative on that. And I think Mr. Griffith would have been a, a good candidate for that, since he is a member of the, the conservation group. Okay, we're down to budget amendments. We'll take the amendments the way they were submitted. Mr. Haas had submitted his, uh, recommendations in that regard, um, last week, Tuesday, on the first. We'll go through the budget amendments, each one. And, uh, I put one in on the, um, technology department, and then Mr. Griffith has a, a list that we'll go through also. So Mr. Haas, we're going to start with, uh, your email that had the information that you provided.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion for his first recommendation on the revenue, Division 12, District Attorney. We have a motion.
Moved. Moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas makes some motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. On the question.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Question.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas and then Ms. Sadek, I think you're next.
What, what holds true for, for every single one except for the library, um, line item, that all these, again, just like, just like I do every year, we look at that, the telescope view from the past couple of years of the budget. And we're just looking at the, some of these line items, in my opinion, are, are, are very, very, very conservative. And I, I like being conservative. I like that. But however, um, I think we're missing out on some additional revenues by being super conservative. And I also think we're also, um, expensing too much based on giving them too much leeway based on prior years. So it just holds true for this one. I'm just trying to tighten the budget down best we can. And , uh, most of these are not earth-shattering budget amendments. There are a couple thousand dollars here, a couple thousand there, $163 in one case. So it's not going to break anybody's budget, but I think they're all appropriate.
Okay. Ms. Sadek, you, you want?
Yeah, the only, I mean, I'm all in favor, Harry, of increasing revenue. And most of the life bound, no problem. But how do you, um, for instance, uh, say the DA will be able to collect that much more money in restitution? A lot of people never pay restitution. And, you know, it is limited, especially, I would think, during the next year, when people will have restitution, but they can't pay it because we all know what's happening. So that's my concern on this. I don't want to put something out there that is going to be very hard for the District Attorney's Office to reach.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
No, no, I, I hear, she'll, I hear exactly what you're saying. And if you just even look at the current year, and I'm looking through my, um, my budget here as well, even restitution for the 2020 actuals, it's, it's $4,000 right there. And that was back in October. If you look at 2019, it was 9,000 for the, the actual amount. We know a lot of this gets tidied up here in the last few weeks of the, of the fiscal year. So again, it's not asking a lot, but I think it's in line with what we've seen in the past years.
Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please. If you vote yes, you approve the amendment as presented. If you vote no, the amendment does not pass. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes. Okay, moving down to administrative services, Mr. Haas. Uh, under a licensing department. You actually have two amendments, one in regards to hunting license, the other regards to the dog licenses. Um, you want to make the motion, Mr. Haas? Yes? You're sorry I cut off there. I don't know if your phone or your connection, do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second.
Who's, who was second, Mr. Perry?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, under the line 420 dot 10, hunting license, we have an amendment to go from 12,000 to 15,000 as part of the revenue in that line item, and we have a motion for Mr. Haas, second by Mr. Perry. On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, moving down to the next amendment presented, under Dog License Commission, the amendment provides for an increase in revenue from 25,000 to 28,000. Mr. Haas, you're making the motion?
Yes, sir, so moved.
Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down under expenses, Mr. Haas, you want to comment on the first one there, under the Solicitor's Office?
Solicitor's Office, so, that's, I believe, the first one is special legal?
Correct.
From 515,000 down to 500,000. This is one I bring up every year, and, again, last year it was in line, I, I wanted to shrink that down, and sure enough, we looked like we hit that target, and I just think we can, we can peel off a little bit more money here with special legal. Again, we tend to spend what we have, and we tend to save what we don't allocate, so, again, it's not going to break any budget, it's not going to break the bank, but I think we can live within the means, and $15,000 will mean another half position somewhere else in Losern County.
You're making that motion, Mr. Haas, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second, Urban.
Urban, on the question.
Mr. McGinley, on the question?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Um, just, just looking at the comparison sheets, the five, the 20, 2020 budget was at 590,000, and the Office of Law reduced that to 515,000 for 2021, and I see we spent 270,000 to date, but in years past, we spent considerably more in special legal services, so I'm just a little bit concerned about, are we going to have a problem, and we're going to have to backfill that account if we cut it too much. In 2019, we spent 711,000, in 2018, we spent 670,000, closer to 671, and then in 2018, we spent 688. So, so there was a, a huge amount of money coming out of that fund, and it's been reduced already by the Office of Law by 80,000 or so, or 75,000, so I'm a little bit concerned if that's going to be a problem for us to reduce it by, and I, I agree with Harry that, you know, if the money's not there, we'll probably be a little bit less apt to spend it if it's not allocated. My concern is if we end up in a problem and we end up spending more, where are we going to get the money to backfill it?
I, I concur with Councilman Griffith's assessment. We, I will be using the money that had, was allocated in last year's budget, we have enormous costs due to election litigation that I will tell you, I did not anticipate it to the extent that we sought this year. We've made a concerted effort, the Office of Law, along with the department and the division heads, to try to prevent litigation from occurring, and I think that we were fairly successful with that, but litigation is out there, I went over the litigation in my budget presentation over a month ago, council is aware of the minefields that are out there. I streamlined the budget, my budget request, in this line item with the prodding of the county manager and budget and finance, the amount that I requested really is the bare bones that I anticipate that we will need for the upcoming year.
Other members of council? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Haas, second by Mr. Urban. If you vote yes, that the amendment goes into the budget, if you vote no, the budget stays as proposed number of 515, if you vote for the amendment, it goes to 500,000.
And as you remember, Mr. Chair, just to keep in mind as we vote on this, that we've cleared a lot of giant hurdles, we had a lot of back, backfill with some really horrific cases here in Losern County, we just don't have that going forward, much to the credit of Ms. Crookmo and her staff.
Agreed. As you know, Mr. Haas, because you've been with us for many years, there are sometimes some minefields that pop up that we were not aware of, and unfortunately, they do cost money. Okay, that being said, roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Thank you. Moving down to the next line item, advertising, the amendment is to take the amount of 263 in the proposed budget and lower that down to $100. Mr. Haas, you're making that motion?
Making the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Snee. On the question?
This is nickels and dimes in the living room furniture cushions, Mr. Chair. It adds up, thank you.
That's a, a good comparison, I believe, Mr. Haas.
Right next to the cheeses, thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to the next department, 4154, Conflict Council, in regards to examination slash witnesses, the proposed budget had the budget amount of $75,000, the amendment proposes an amount of $65,000. Mr. Haas, you make that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. On the question.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Haas, go ahead.
Minister Hycam does an awesome job in, in his capacity, what he does there, we all know that, and he's, he's served the county taxpayers real, really well over his, his career, and, again, I just look at this, the, the expert witnesses, I know they're an essential part of, of what we do here in Losern County, however, every year, we, we want to make sure that we are holding the purse strings really tight, and we get the best value for what we pay for, and no reflection on that department's job, what they've been doing, and I just think we can, we can squeeze some, some dollars out of that line item, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a comment. This one, I disagree with Harry on, because I know Mr. Hycam does a wonderful job, but also, it's just to me, very unfair, the DA's office has incredible resources for examination of witnesses, if they come up with some very high-powered witnesses, he has to, he has to present himself, and they can be very expensive. I'd rather see him at what he thinks than take any money in that respect away from him. That's just my feeling, knowing, knowing what the district attorney has at their fingertips.
Sure. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Haas.
And every, we go around that, why the state could really lend a hand in this issue if they had a consortium of expert witnesses, that perhaps they could disperse amongst the counties to do justice, we, we talk about this every year, and again, this is higher than our pay grade here, but, again, I, I think we could really do the taxpayers a service, but even more so, we could do the accused a greater service if we really push this to higher level, make sure that our staff and that we use our resources to lobby the folks in Harrisburg to really help us out here at the local level to enforce justice, so.
I agree with you, Harry, except you're on the legislative committee, and we haven't done any lobbying on that, and so it's not going to happen this year, no matter if it's, where I feel 100% right, and I agree with you, the state should be doing a lot more, but it's not, and it's not going to do it this year, and I'd rather not put the people in jeopardy this year.
Not to go back and forth, Mr. Chair, but we can always, you know, transfer a line item over if that's certainly the case, thank you.
This, this is Leanne. I just know that, I did make notes that it said, you know, would be a delay because of COVID this year, so they felt that that was going to run over into next year, so we, I know what you're saying, Harry, we could just pull it from somewhere else, but maybe this would be good to leave it there because of that, hoping to get back to some normal, normalization next year.
No, you're absolutely right, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Well, if there's someone else in council, certainly you'll have an opportunity, Mr. Haas.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, just, Mr. McGinley, Walter? Just, just a little history on that line item, you know, in 2017, we spent 38,000, 18, we spent 55, 19, we spent 54, and 20, we spent 44 to date, we, the budget was at 65, so I don't really think it's unreasonable to roll it to 65, and, and, you know, in years past, it hasn't gone anywhere close to 65, he was missing it by about 10,000, so I, I tend to agree with this amendment, I think it's, it's not going to hurt to get the extra $10,000 out of there, and I think it'll be beneficial, and, you know, as council can obviously take money and put it back in if he runs short, or he can transfer from within another account if he has extra money somewhere else, maybe, maybe he'll have money somewhere that he's not using, like other contractual supplies, he can roll over into that, that area, so I support the amendment.
Okay, Mr. Haas, now you have your chance.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the feedback from, from the council people, and, you know, I do think that when I, when I craft these budget items, and it's, it's hard to remember exactly the argument after a few weeks, but yeah, and I appreciate that, Leanne, because the, the courts have said they're not going to get rolling until at least January at this point, so we're missing one-twelfth, really, if you run it, really look at true budgeting, you could probably strike one-twelfth of the budget items from any court-related issue, I'm not asking that right now, but I think in some of these more smaller items, I don't think it's a lot to ask, and Walter's exactly right, if you look at the, at the history here, it's, it's been traditionally low.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
And just your response, Harry, is I think they're going to be getting, rolling in the Civil Division in January, I think criminal has been, at least the last time, Mr. Voe gave us a, or Judge Voe gave us a recount or an update on the courts, I thought he said, you know, the, the criminal cases are going on, whether they're going on at the JCC or the arena, or wherever they're having them, they are continuing with the, the criminal cases, they have to follow the rules.
Yeah, and I know the juries will not be reporting all through the month of January too, which, you know, I'm, I'm glad we're talking about the shield, because that might be an area that we could really shrink back a little bit, so thanks, thanks for that.
Okay.
I just have a comment, I think this is an area where we have to be very careful. Obviously, as I think everybody recognizes, we have a responsibility to make sure when we serve people under this Conflict Council, that they have the proper legal advice and witnesses, et cetera. Obviously, this year particularly, we all know what we've gone through so far, and it looks like we have a lot to go ahead yet, hopefully the vaccines will help us, so I'm very hesitant to even consider a, a reduction here because of that, we really don't know, and we don't know what's happened because of some of the delays and, and pauses that we've had so far. We've got to remember, when our budget book is published, it's October, which means it's the information usually through the end of September, so you have October, November, and December, really, a quarter of the year, that sometimes doesn't hit the budget book until very late, so those are things to consider, but you have the amendment in front of you, Mr. Haas made the motion, Mr. Urban made the second, with that being said, roll call, please.
Mr. Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Thank you. Mr. Haas, moving down to Budget and Finance, under General Government Operations, 599. 64 landfill, and it's actually over on his next sheet, the actual numbers. You want to make a motion, Mr. Haas?
Making that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas in regards to the amendment to take the proposed number of $100,000 and reduce it to $90,000?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. Mr. Haas, do you have a comment?
Yes, from what I recall, in the discussion point with staff, that this was an, an area to, to hold out for the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority with dealing with their, the mandates that, that come from on high, and that I just think that Losern County, we've, we've got no business double paying a fee that is assessed on every property owner in Losern County, it's, it's essentially a double tax, it's inherently unfair, it's only $10,000, but this, this really needs to be resolved, the average person is struggling out there during this pandemic, and then this is just rubbing salt in the eyeball, so respectfully ask council members to come on board and say no to the $10,000 increase.
Okay. Other council members? Mr. Swetts, are you on the line?
I am, I just want to say that Mr. Haas is correct, that $10,000 was for WVSA, again, as always, we'll leave it to the will of the council, but that's, the $90,000 is really what our day-to-day is, the $10,000 was a placeholder for any potential settlement, if we have any potential settlement, it would have to come from another place in the budget, it would still need to be brought before council anyway.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think we can still have that, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So that line item will still remain, it will just be $10,000 less?
Yes. Anyone else? Roll call, please. If you vote yes, the amendment goes, the proposed number goes from 100,000 to 90,000, if you vote no, the 100,000 stays in the proposed budget.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Moving down to the next item, under Administrative Services, Division Thirty, Bureau of Elections, Department Forty-One Twenty. Uh, the line item is five-ten dash thirty-five overtime. The proposed number in the budget is eight thousand dollars. The proposed number, uh, in the amendment is six thousand five hundred dollars. Mr. Haas, do you make the motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second, Urban.
Second, Walter.
Mr. Urban? Under question?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm suggesting, I, I believe there's a second item as well for, uh, Election Bureau.
Yeah, there is a second.
But, um, for both these, basically, you know, we, and, and for those of us who've been here for, um, for nine years on this council, you know, when, um, prior administrations and, and prior directors for the Election Bureau, they would often switch up the figures and saying that, oh, well, you know, it's a presidential year, therefore, we're going to expend more money, we need more hands on deck, we need more printing. And then the same song and dance comes around the off years, where I say, well, we've, for the local elections, we've got more people on the ballot, therefore, we need more money to go out, and we need to have more, more hands on deck and more printing. So the, the same thing is the, I, I'm here to, I'm making these budget amendments to true up that figure. Again, just like Walter probably tell you, if you look in, in past years, uh, by and large, and I'm, I'm going back several years, this line item is, is, um, um, not been, been totally utilized. And I just think that this is a way to save several thousand dollars. And, um, we're in, in the middle of an Election Inquiry Committee as well, and we still didn't get quite a few answers, even at last meeting, about what, uh, the true operations are currently in that office. So I would like to withhold, um, those expenditures until we really get a, a true sense of, of what's truly needed there in the office going forward. There's a lot of variables out there and a lot of ambiguities. So thanks, everybody, for the consideration. It is absolutely nothing personal, but, um, I've seen this before, many, many years over. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairman McGinley, can I speak?
Oh, is that Mr. Parsnick?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So we don't know what else the state is going to impose on the county going forward with elections, but so far from what I've seen, it's not going to be less work or expenses. Everything they've done so far is additional work, which includes additional expenses. And I don't think the state's going to be ponying up any more additional funding, uh, past this CARES Act that they're doing. And since we really don't know what they're going to impose on us next, um, I'm requesting that the budget stand as proposed.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi, this is Leanne.
Go ahead, Ms. McDermott.
So far for this year, we are over. So it was budgeted for twenty-twoy-three thousand dollars. And right now, the actual amount is sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one. So that's quite a shortfall there. Um, I do, I mean, I understand, Harry, what you're saying about the previous years being lower. Um, can you expand on that, maybe, Mr. Parsnick?
Which, which line item?
Well, that is, um, the five-ten thirty-five overtime.
Right, so the, the five-ten thirty-five, most of that overtime was needed because of the Act Seventy-Seven, um, requirements that the state imposed. There was additional tasks that we didn't have to do prior to that, which most of that went to. And as far as advertising, I don't really know what else the state's going to require us to do going forward. Um, and I know that that's, there's a significant difference in, in what we budgeted and what we spent, but I, I, I'm leery to see what the state might impose for advertising going forward, and I, I really don't want to be short on any funding in that, in that budget.
I was just talking about the overtime right now, though. So with the overtime currently for the year, we are at sixteen, well, that was as of the budget book, sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and eleven cents. That's the actual, but we only budgeted twenty, or three thousand for twenty-twenty. So we're at a shortfall right now for the wages overtime. So I guess the question, you know, what, like, where do you, we pull that money from somewhere else, and that would be the case in the future, right?
Well, some of that, some of those expenses this year are going to go to CARES, and they're going to be, they're going to be covered under COVID. So I'm, this year, the overage, I know what that is, and I know where those expenses are going to be covered under, but next year, I'm not going to have that, that avenue to recover some of those expenses.
Mr. Parsnick?
I, I really don't want to, to drop overtime. I'd rather keep it the same.
I think Ms. House was trying to come in, Ms. House?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Parsnick. How many employees, you have five employees in that office, uh, full, uh, full-time? How many of them are eligible for overtime?
We have six employees and four are eligible.
Four are eligible, but the salaries for the new positions are lower than the positions that were vacated, correct?
The salaries for the new position started at twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars or, or something like that, yes.
And the person who left the position was at a higher salary, correct?
Yes.
So their overtime rate would have been higher as well, correct?
The overtime rate for the hire, for the person that left, yes.
Right, for, if the person had a higher salary, their overtime rate would have been higher. So you have two new hires in that office that are at lower salaries. So I think even with overtime, um, you might see a savings in overtime just because of the change in the, uh, in the position, in the people holding the position.
And, and with the, with the normal work environment, Ms. House, I would agree with you, but, um, I don't know what to expect going forward.
Anyone else?
Yeah, what, what's that number that we are a, able to reimburse this year, Mr. Parsnick?
Um, I don't have that in front of me, Mr. Urban. Mr. Swetts is currently working on that.
I mean, that would be good to know. You know, that way we could sort of true up that number on that line item?
Well.
Because I mean, this is, right, but the sixteen thousand dollars at the moment, you know, if you have reimbursable funds, you know, then, then we can look at the comparison of apples to apples. Um, understandably, too, when the county manager sent out the ballot applications this year, you created additional work for the office by doing that. So, you know, um, you also outsourced, you know, the ballot production process, you know, with, with Election IQ LLC. So you basically dropped them the file, and they stuffed predominantly most of the ballots, um, for us in that first wave. So, you know, do you plan on doing that next year as well with a third-party vendor?
I do.
So they'll take a, a great workload off of us?
I, I, they'll take a piece of the workload off of us. It won't be a great workload, but it'll be a piece of it that we can utilize CARES funding for next year to pay for.
Anyone else?
You, you, you just said you're able to utilize CARES funding next year as well?
There's a, there's an additional grant that expires on twenty-twenty-three that we're going to use some CARES funding next year for.
Okay. So I think that should be also, uh, those line items should be adjusted with that CARES funding, you know, in anticipation of, of those amounts. We, we would like to know those amounts.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Yes, go ahead.
And, uh, Mr. Parsnick, the overtime that was in the budget this year, that we have that twenty thousand dollar number, uh, um, as of October, it was sixteen thousand. The people who were coming from other departments to help, were we paying their overtime through the Bureau of Elections line item on overtime? Is that how that was working?
Um, there, there might be.
Dave, I'll tell you. So, it's, no. So the, the elections overtime is based on election time. If someone came from another department, I would be in there overtime. So if I had a Budget and Finance employee go over, it'd be in Budget and Finance overtime, not election overtime. That number to date is closer to twenty-five thousand than sixteen thousand. Uh, it's all CARES eligible because it was because of the additional work. But I think to Mr. Urban's point, I don't know what a no, quote-unquote, "normal" year would have been, because we obviously would have had some overtime. So just because it's all CARES eligible doesn't mean we would have had no overtime if there was.
Yeah, so to put a finer point on that conversation, and, um, um, Mr. Swetts, uh, overtime in other departments, like Vacation Visitor Bureau, some of those departments where we utilize that staff to help us in, in the Bureau of Elections, their overtime numbers are going to be skewed because we're going to think that there's overtime in those departments, when in fact, it's not actually in those departments. It's because they were used to help for elections, correct?
And I, correct and incorrect, so correct in that it's in the actual, but I think when Mr. Urban asked in the budget, we didn't anticipate, we didn't budget that amount going forward. So you're correct in that there's CARES related in twenty-twenty's actual, but that was in no way, shape, or form carried over into the twenty-twenty-one estimate. Because as we all know, the biggest portion, the twenty-eight point six million, ends this year on twelve-thirty. So that's not in the twelve, in the twenty-twenty-one budget, but it is in the twenty-twenty actual.
No, and I, I, I understand that when you were drafting the budget in October, that probably wasn't what you were thinking, putting overtime numbers in. But I'm just saying, from a council member perspective, when you're looking at overtime in different departments, just because it says overtime in Vacation Visitor Bureau doesn't necessarily mean that overtime was generated using, being Convention Visitor Bureau work. It was done using Bureau of Election work. But because there were employees over there, that's why it was charged to that line item, correct?
Correct, so they're by department, and that's what makes it more work for us, because now we got to go back through each department, see what was true department work and what was work over in elections. So, yes, it's in, it's in each one.
Yep, and to Ms. House's point, is there's two employees in there that were moved to a different position, which got increased salaries, which also hurts overtime if they work, because those four eligible employment, employees, we have one who is actually at the lower salary, the other three, or the other, yeah, there's two that are eligible for the lower overtime, but there's two that are eligible for higher overtime based on the fact that they moved into a position, uh, and got the increase in their salary. So that, that overtime is more, is going to cost us more if we use those two employees. So on one hand, we're saving money, but on the other hand, we're spending twice as much, actually. So I, just a, just a comment, I, I do think that that number should be rolled back. Uh, in overtime, I think we need to get the Bureau of Elections to work way smarter and, and use less, uh, overtime, just like we do with the prison, when we, with the Corrections Department, we had that issue over there. And, and Mr. Rakovich did a great job of tightening that all down. I think we need to do the same over here in the Elections Bureau as well.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Haas, second by Mr. Urban, to take the proposed number in the budget, which is eight thousand dollars, and reduce it to six thousand five hundred. If you vote yes, the amendment passes. If you vote no, the amendment does not pass. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Moving down to the next, uh, item, under Administrative Services, five-fifty dash three-zero, Advertising. The amendment proposed by Mr. Haas, the proposed number is twelve thousand dollars for advertising for the twenty-twenty calendar year. And he proposes a new number of five thousand dollars in, as a budget amendment. Mr. Haas, do you make that amendment?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Edman? Under question?
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, council dismembers, what I, I just spoke, it's kind of one and the same with the overtime. A lot of overages, a lot of ambiguity going forward, and I think we do a lot better.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Uh, I have, uh, I would like to propose, instead of the amendment going down to five thousand dollars, take it down to eight thousand dollars. I'll make that as an amendment to Mr. Haas's amendment. If I have a second, we'll vote on that first.
Second, Chris.
Okay. So the amendment would take the budget amount of twelve thousand dollars and reduce it down to amount of eight thousand dollars. I made that amendment to, uh, Mr. Haas's amendment, second by Mr. Perry. Under question?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, under question?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, what is the, what is the rationale for not, for increasing that?
We're not increasing, we're decreasing it.
No, for increasing, no, increasing Mr. Haas's reduction?
Well, I, my, my thoughts on it is that, yes, I believe there should be a reduction in that proposed number. I don't think the reduction should be quite as low as Mr. Haas's, uh, proposal. And I think that's a reasonable number, uh, to put into, as a budget amendment.
Um, the, the history on that account, they haven't spent anywhere close to five thousand dollars since, for the last five years. So I, I just, you know, I don't understand why we need to give them, uh, six, sixty-five hundred dollars in advertising when, in fact, they haven't even come close to that in five years.
Uh, the amendment would be for eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
I agree with what you said about the, the history, but I do think as you go forward, uh, we're not sure if some of the requirements are going to be coming down. I think, though, you will be seeing quite a bit over the next, uh, calendar year. Hopefully, they'll make some clarifications so that the process goes in a better manner, and hopefully, uh, you know, that advertisement will be a part of that responsibility to get it done, so that we have, uh, more clarity to the process.
And, and, and this, this one, Ms. Wachilla was at the Inquiry Committee. That was one of the questions, I think, or not at the Inquiry Committee, but at the, the work session, one of the questions was asked about the advertisement, and she wouldn't give a clear answer as to what, what she thought was going to be increased in advertising. And we just went through a presidential election. If we're going to spend a lot of money in advertising, that should have been this year, not years coming in municipal elections. I know we have standard stuff like proclamations and, and all those type of things that have to be advertised, I get that stuff. But I don't see anything that the legislature's going to do that we're going to have to advertise over and above, uh, you know, what, what was done in a presidential election. So, uh, I think that, uh, you know, the, I, I will support the amendment.
That's fine.
That's true. Mr. Griffiths, we were not through, we were not through departments.
Uh, I think it's in our best interest to make sure we have the resources available to make sure we get it done.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Ms. Edman?
I, I do, I was, uh, myself, um, when I reviewed Harry's thing, I said I would prefer going to seventy-five hundred, because I also thought five thousand might be a little too much. And Walter's right. Uh, she did not give us a great answer. Well, I think I asked her that question last at the work session. She did not give it, she said she just doesn't know what the legislator would do. But I would be inclined to go with your amendment, because it's closer, uh, to what I thought was, uh, the right number as opposed to Harry's, that six to one half a dozen another, I think.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I think we've already seen it in several means that we've had with the Inquiry Committee, that there were a lot of latent costs that the governor and then subsequently the legislature passed on down to the counties, you know, it's the same old song and dance here. And I think we're still trying to get to the bottom of that as well. But even so, this line item is not one of those areas like Councilman Griffith just suggested. Um, it's, it's just not going to happen. You can look, you can telescope out five and seven years, and it's, it's just the same thing. So encourage the members to, to do the right thing, really, and, um, support the, the full, um, reduction, this line item. Thank you.
Okay. There are no one else? Roll call, please, on the amendment, which would result in a twelve thousand proposed number going down to eight thousand. If you vote yes, the number will be eight thousand. If you vote yes, the number will be 8,000. If you vote no, we go back to Mr. Haas's, uh, amendment as proposed. Roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
I, I just got to figure, um, yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. How?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman, yes, four, no.
Okay, that passes. So the amendment would be $12,000 proposed to $8,000 as a budget amendment. Moving down to the next item, Mr. Haas, under Intergovernmental. Uh, this would be the Luzern Library Association, which is line item 590-dash-dot, excuse me, 32. And his amendment proposes, we have a proposed number of $900,000 for the library. And Mr. Haas, you're proposing a number of $945,000 as a new number for the library, correct?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we have a motion for Mr. Haas. Do we have a second, please?
Second, Lian.
Ms. McDermott? Under question?
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
You, um, you know, Ms. Chairman and folks who've been serving here for the past service, I mean, as well. Yeah, I'm not making tough decisions and, um, going and, and looking at the library and seeing if we were overpaying our support to the county library system, uh, a few months ago. Um, nobody likes to cut funds like that. So I stuck my neck out there and really want to investigate that. Um, I appreciate the Director of the Luzern County Library Services coming to council and explaining the reasoning, um, why he needed those funds, why I thought it was a bad idea. And he also listed the, the other funding streams that the libraries across our county get. Apparently, we, Luzern County supports the library $900,000 in its annual budget. Okay, what that is, that is 17%. Again, I'm going on the figures that the Director shared with us just a couple of months ago. That's 17% of their, their total allocations. Local government's support with 29%. Fundraising supports 33%, and the state kicks in 19%. So, um, which is actually surprising because I, I, you know, the county, the, the state doesn't usually um, help us out on the local level with a lot of things like that. But nonetheless, um, the 33% with fundraising clearly has been severely curtailed this year. And, um, I think when the Director was here, he, he convinced me that they're in, they're in pretty dire straits, almost as, as bad as the county taxpayers are. And, um, an increase of $45,000 would be a 5% increase here from Luzern County on our end, which is, is a pretty sizable increase. And I don't think we've had a significant one in, in a long time. Um, but nonetheless, um, that's, that's a lot of money to us. But it's also only a 1% increase in their overall budget. So, um, it kind of helps, um, you know, support institution that is desperately needed. And I, I'm not pleased with some of our, our, our branches around the county that just never opened. And there were only a couple that didn't. And I, I took real offense to that because I think it really hurt the communities that they were serving. But for the most part, like the Director said, most of these branches um, came open, they, they were opened. And, um, you know, we want to support the good work of, of the folks that help out our community. And, uh, especially for families that, um, have other situations, even the home front, it, it is a real source of strength. So, um, looking back, going back, I want to investigate that. And I, I, quite a few members spoke up at the time and said, no, they definitely don't want to cut the library. And I think this would be a, a good time as, as we've been turning our purse strings around Christmas time to maybe get back and, and support something that definitely does add value to all our communities across Luzern County. So, um, my rationale for putting that back out there.
Okay. Anyone else on the question?
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Harry, I couldn't agree with you more. Um, we have a little small library here in Mountain Top, uh, Kirk, the Marion Kirby Library. I kind of use it quite a bit and they have a great little system going on there and, uh, and, and it really helps. And it's being used, but it's being used efficiently and safely. And, and, and the people that work in there, uh, uh, do a great job. So I couldn't support you. I, I just, I, I agree with you 100%.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing none. The amendment is to take the proposed number of $900,000 for Luzern County Library System and increase that number to $945,000. If you vote yes, the number will change to 945,000. If you vote no, the number will remain at 900,000. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley, I, Mr. McGinley, I think I got confused. And i- is it possible that I changed my vote?
Yeah, because we haven't completed the, the, uh, vote here yet.
Okay.
So you're changing your vote from no to yes? Am I correct in saying that, Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
It still passes, uh, but a little more strongly. Mr. Haas, that completes the ones you sent us, correct?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council members.
Okay, thank you. If you go to the next page, page 80. Our last work session, uh, we spent a great deal of time talking about information technology. There's a lot of discussion about uh, some of the services and positions that are necessary to, to offer the, the, uh, IT department and, you know, across the county. And obviously, as we all recognize, because of our current situation, technology is becoming a greater and greater part of what we do here. So as a result, uh, I asked Mr. Demaro to provide some information to us, which he was kind enough to do. And he also provided a job description, uh, in regard to the position. So that was also part of the packet that you received. Uh, the budget amendment, uh, as it calls, that we add $60,000 in line 951015, which is wages non-representative, $60,000, which is the compensation that was mentioned in the, uh, job description. And in order to do that, we would take money out of the contractual services line item of $60,000 to balance out that position as far as funding. Any questions? Or first, do we have a motion, I should think?
Other questions, Chairman?
Ms. Sedman?
Is that salary figure, is that in line?
Excuse me?
That salary figure, is that in line?
Yes.
With a new couple being hired?
Yes, but we need a second first before we can get into questions of discussion.
Mr. McGinley, is this your amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'll second it.
Okay, we have Ms. Sedman and Ms. Hauck have seconded the motion. On the question, Mr. Schnee, I think what you said is that salary in line and the answer I received in, in that regard was yes. In fact, the salary range that, uh, was provided for you and the information is 60 to 65,000. Other questions?
Uh, Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Griffith.
Um, on the, uh, the other contractual, uh, reduction. I think we need to reduce that more to cover the benefits. A $60,000 year position is going to cost the county.
I thought about that, Mr. Griffith. Um, I think that, um, they'll have to do something maybe to adjust that within their, the budget. But I thought the compensation should come out of that line item because we talked last week, it's pretty clear to me, I thought that, um, much of the contractual services they were looking for could be handled by an employee and probably get better service. And obviously, if the person's here full time, uh, there may be some other things that they can, uh, help with the IT department.
I, I, I certainly understand the position why we're, we're going to hire somebody. In fact, I think I made a comment that said if Mr. Demaro wanted another position, that he needs to take it from a line item and, and reduce his other line items. So I can appreciate that, but we still have to pay for the benefits.
Yeah, and I think that that would be something that Mr. Demaro would have to shift in his budget, his remaining budget to make that, uh, accommodation.
Well, we aren't funding benefits, then how are we going to pay for it? He can, he can shift money.
I made that clear, that he would have to find the money in his budget and other line items to pay for that.
Well, why don't we just allocate the money in the line item now?
Uh, because I don't know what those things cost because they're lumped together.
Well, I mean, we have it funded in health, uh, health insurance and we have a funding line item for, uh, you know, all the other, uh, line items, holiday pay and all that. That's all funded into budget. So I think we should take more money from the other contractual services to fund the entire position, not just fund the, the position itself without the benefits.
There might be other line items in the budget that Mr. Demaro is able to change around in order to fund that part of it. But that's, you know, this is the amendment as presented.
Can I ask a question? This is Linda about why it's a non-representative position?
They're all non-representative.
All of them in IT are non-representative.
That's correct.
Okay.
So it'd be in line with everybody else who's currently in those, in that particular, uh, department.
I'd like to propose an amendment, uh, that reduces that other contractual services by 80,000 to, uh, fund the payroll liabilities and the benefits.
I'll second that, Linda.
Okay, we have a motion for Ms. Hauck. Second by Mr. Griffith. And essentially what you, what you said, Ms. Hauck, is that so subtracting $60,000 out of the contractual services, you're requesting we subtract 80,000, correct?
Correct, but still fund the sal- the salary, the wages would still be 60. But, uh, the extra 20 would cover some of the benefits. And then if he needs money for other contractual services, he can figure out how to pay for that. But at least we're funding the position properly.
On that amendment, do we have any other questions or comments? I think $80,000 is a little bit high personally. I think more in the line of probably 70 or 75, but that's on my own personal perception of it.
Healthcare is, uh, is, um, probably more than half of that 20,000, extra 20,000.
Yeah, it's probably 10,000 or possibly.
And then your pension, pension contributions too.
Correct.
Oh, we could ask Mr. Swet's. We could ask Mr. Swet's what each benefit, what each employee costs as a benefits. The, the payroll sheet that was sent to us, it outlines that pretty well.
Well, the big thing, I think, Mr. Griffith, is what healthcare, um, plan they have to select as far as their family situation. And at this point, I think it's a little bit unknown because we really don't know, uh, the person who would might, who may fill this position if it's approved. Okay, any other questions? We have a, we're going to vote on the amendment that Ms. Hauck presented, second by Mr. Griffith, to change the other contractual services from a subtract $60,000 to $80,000. Okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Okay, yes. So now we're going back to the whole picture here for the, the position as proposed. And then, uh, under other contractual services, that number is now $80,000. The non-representative position still has a salary of $60,000.
Well, I think that one amendment already passed. You just voted on that, the 80,000 one. So I think you only really need to vote on the wage one.
Uh, I, well, that's fine. I mean, doesn't make any difference how we vote as long as we get it done.
It was the other, same thing that you did with the other amendment that Harry made. You know, from 12,000 to 8,000. You just voted on it once and it was done.
True. But that's a little bit different because we have a coordination between the, we had a coordination between the lines. That's fine. The same, and you, um, still continue with your motion on the $60,000 for the position?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck, do you still second that?
Yes.
Very good. On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. McGinley, if I could, on that, on that position, we took, we just took $80,000 from the other contractual uh, services line item, right?
Right.
But we didn't allocate the other 20, we did not allocate the 20,000 we took out.
We will next week, Mr. Griffith. Once I know where it should go as far as benefits, I'll have a
Okay, okay.
Amendment next week to, uh,
Yeah, because otherwise his budget is going to be $20,000 short and he's not going to have any money to pay for that. So, yeah, okay. As long as we do that next week, that's fine.
Yeah, we have, we have to do it in order to keep the budget balanced. Okay? All right, now we're going to go to Mr. Griffith's amendments, which were, uh, he sent over the weekend.
Uh, can I ask a question, please? This is Sharon.
Yep.
Do we need to remove from the table the 13 tabled amendments? Which are, some of them are part of.
When we get there, we do. Okay?
Okay, but they are part of the ones you're going over now, I think.
That's correct. That's correct. And most of them have to do with the merit increase. Okay? So now we're turning to the information that Mr. Griffith provided. And as Ms. Lawrence has just, uh, questioned, we had several that we, uh, tabled. In fact, was it November the 10th, I think, uh, during that meeting. So if you go to page 74, I think it's the start of the amendments that Mr. Griffith provided. And you can see at the top there, it says tabled amendments. And if you look through tabled amendments, they're all merit increases. Mr. McGinley, under the, uh, judicial services, under the coroner's office, there's a item there that was tabled that was not a merit increase. And I think.
Intergovernmental was another one?
Yeah, intergovernmental, under the, uh, Transportation Authority. And the District Attorney's Office, we had also merit increases. So let's, we'll do the merit increases all together if that's all right with everybody. The very first thing is we're going to take them off the table. So who would like to take off the budget amendments as proposed that were tabled? Who would like to take them off the table? Who's going to make that motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Was that Mr. Haas? Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question?
Hi, this is Lian.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment, um, as we, you know, everyone knows that merit increases are, are, are very hard thing to do this year. Not to say that everyone didn't work very hard, but everyone, just everyone's hurting. Um, it's been a bad year. I do feel bad for, um, the corrections officers and the management at, at the prison. Because they, they don't get to work virtually from home. They have to show up there. And with the numbers that were worked all over the place, that does include the prison. Um, so I just really want to just give them a shout out. Thank you that they are working so hard, you know, no matter what. They have to show up to work. When they're down staff, you know, they're, they're, they're doing a lot of overtime. And it's the manag- And it's the management that doesn't, you know, get any of that extra. So I just wanna say thank you to them.
Okay, anyone else on the question about tabling, taking it off the table? If not, all in favor of taking them off the table indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, most in carry. So can we take the merit, uh, raises as a group? Everybody?
Yes, Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
I'll make, I make a motion and we remove all funding from line item five ten dot sixteen throughout the entire budget.
Mr. Griffith makes the motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? Second. On the question?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris. Real quick question. Just curious, Brian, could you tell me how many employees does the merit pay affect? Do you know that?
Mr. Swets, did you hear that question? It looks like your microphone is muted.
I was muted. I'm sorry. Yes, I did hear that question. We're talking about two hundred fifty of about fifteen hundred and eighty employees, uh, which also incorporates court employees. So probably, you know, about thirteen percent of the total staff is, uh, in that non-rep category.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Uh, anyone else first, Mr. Pedri?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Pedri, you have the floor.
Um, I just wanted to, to clarify for, uh, the, the amendment, five ten dot sixteen also carries across non-general fund, um, uh, agencies such as human services and community development. And council really does not have the ability to cut those fundings because it all comes from the state. For those particulars, divisions, departments, they all have to go back into another line item, uh, such as purchase services or something along those lines for human services. Or it can't be a general cut uh, for all of those non-general fund, uh, departments. I wanna remind council of that.
Uh, I, I, I think, does everybody understand? The human services particularly, community development, et cetera, because it's federal and state funding, any money that would be cut from the proposed merit increases would be go back into the program budgets for those particular offices that would be affected.
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, if I could, yes, and I, and I understand what Mr. Pedri's saying, but we still have uh, financial responsibility for that money. So we can cut them, that funding and it can go back into the programs if we wish. We aren't included from regulating their salaries.
Mr. McGinley, could I speak on Mr. Griffith's part?
Sure.
So Mr. Griffith's correct, council has control of all funds, but these individual funds need to balance. So it's, the general fund is different. That's what the tax base is, a tax, tax increase. If we're talking to human service fund and it's a forty million dollar budget and you cut two thousand, that two thousand needs to go somewhere else. That forty million needs to equal forty million. So you can't change the total. If you cut expenses, those expenses need to go to another line.
And that, and that's fine. We can put it into programs. That's not a problem. That's more money.
Okay, everybody clear on that? Anyone else?
Yes, it's Linda. I have a question, Mr. Swets. What's the total, uh, that's allocated in those line items across the budget?
Uh, general, general fund, all funds is about.
General fund.
Uh, all funds is two hundred and some thousand. General fund is less than a hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, again, we just cut a hundred and fifty thousand from, uh, our, due to hard work on the train. I engaged the library forty-five thousand dollars.
Right, and we created a new position, but we found the money for that as well. Um, but there is no tax increase proposed for this budget. I know someone in public comment earlier said, you know, something about raising taxes and giving raises, but the fact is that there is no tax increase anyway. We're trim- trimming the budget down, but there's no tax increase regardless of what happens with these merit increases.
That's correct, Ms. Houck. Whether they're passed, amended, or changed or nothing, there's still no tax increase.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to make a, a quick statement too. I mean, as far as raises across the board, uh, don't forget, you know, even county employees received a twelve hundred dollar stimulus check, uh, or most of them probably received a stimulus check as well this year. And, you know, government employees typically are, are immune to mostly like layoffs and, and whatnot. And if they did get laid off, they did have the ability to collect the six hundred dollars in additional cares funding if they were laid off during the earlier part of the year. Um, so, you know, that twelve hundred dollar stimulus check itself was like a raise for them. Um, un- unlike, you know, most people that work out in the public.
Anyone else?
Well, Mr. McGinley, if nobody else has something to say, I would like to say something else. It's Linda.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I, we've had this discussion over several years, um, on council about how the, the salaries are allocated in the position budget, um, and how they're tied into the general budget and the timing of it. And I know, um, that we have suggested several times that, uh, management should determine what the salaries are and put those salaries into the position budget. And the, um, rationale for management has been that they don't complete the performance evaluations till later in the year. But actually, management controls performance evaluations. You can complete them whenever you want to. Um, and my recommendation for next year, next year's budget is to do your performance evaluations, determine what your salaries are going to be, and then budget and find the money in the budget that you present. Um, without having a pot of money that's allocated in line items, uh, to be dispersed at whim, uh, which usually happens maybe a week or two after we pass this budget. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very none. We have a motion for Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban.
Have you heard?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Uh, listen, counsel, I, I appreciate everybody's work on this budget because it has been a long process, um, throughout the entire, uh, throughout the entire process that we have. Let me put these in because they sound better. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, you're coming through very clear.
Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. Um, this is, I appreciate counsel throughout this entire process because, uh, it, it has been, uh, a long process and, you know, it seems like this year's budget has been going, uh, very, very smoothly. And I appreciate the, the, the great conversations that we've had throughout this entire process, throughout the entire budget process. One thing that I have to ask for though is for council to really truly consider what you're doing here. Um, and it's my job as county manager to advocate for my people. So I understand that county council has a job to do, but I also have a job to do and that's to stand up for the county workers. And that's to stand up for the people who stood up for the county citizens time and time again throughout this pandemic. And I just wanna review a couple of different things with you, uh, prior to you making your vote. Number one, there is no tax increase in this budget. There is not, there is no, uh, tax increases in this budget that will add, uh, additional burdens on to the loser and county taxpayers. But one thing that I think that you are losing is that the county worker, ninety-five percent of them are county taxpayers. So they are also county taxpayers and they are voters. And, and they have, uh, voted for this county council to represent them and to make the tough decisions here. Governing is hard, ladies and gentlemen. I get it. You have to make some tough decisions and you have to look the public in the eye and say, listen, this is what, this is the reason why I made these decisions. And you have made those decisions in the past, which is why our, our finances are, are in such a better position. So let's not lose sight of the fact that the county worker that you're talking about here is also a taxpayer. And what you're saying here to county workers, to management who receives no hazard pay, no OT, I'm, I'm not aware of the, the stimulus packages that Mr. Urban is talking about, you know, for, for every county worker. No hazard pay, no OT for your, um, uh, for your non-rep citizens. So let's start with the children, youth supervisor. So I was talking to a, uh, a children, youth supervisor the other day. Uh, it was her ten-year anniversary with us. Uh, she has spent the first couple of years of her career in adoptions. Now, for those of you who know social work, there's very few happy places to work within children, youth, social work. It's a very, very difficult place to work. And this individual told me, she makes about, you know, mid-forties, maybe high forties. Um, and I said, why would you ever leave adoptions to go work where she's working at right now? Where she works in the, in the, um, I believe the CPS unit, which is, uh, a unit that has to go out sometimes in the middle of the night to, to help a kid, uh, to do all those different things. Yeah, in, in the middle of a, in the middle of a pandemic. I said, why would you wanna leave adoption in order to do that? And she said, it's, it's about justice. It's about doing my part with her master's degree in order to help the kids of Loser and County. That individual will not receive a raise. So what you're saying to that children, youth worker is thank you for your service, but you do not deserve our support. I wanna go to the coroner's office. The coroner's office this year, uh, has been inundated not only with the normal number of overdose deaths and homicides and natural cause deaths that we have across the entire county. You're talking over three hundred COVID-related deaths that our coroner's office has dealt with and done with professionally and done with dignity and handled with grace throughout this entire, uh, the office entire pandemic. They have been in houses with COVID. They have so, uh, consoled family members. They have done everything that they could do throughout this entire pandemic. Those are management employees that you're talking about here where you're going to pull their raises this year, the one point five percent raises. Not an exorbitant raise, a one point five percent raise was what I'm talking about. And you're saying to the coroner's office, thank you for your support, but you do not, thank you for your service, but you do not deserve our support. Let's go to community development. I asked community development to take, uh, we got cares money this year. We got off twenty million dollars that we can allocate to, um, to our small businesses, which I'm gonna make an announcement on tomorrow, um, to municipalities, the school districts. That's an incredible amount of work. You don't just write out checks to those individuals. There has to be an incredible amount of paperwork that goes through, that goes through. But the community development office stepped up and took care of those things because that's what they do on a daily basis. And they're gonna get that money out to the people who need it the most, and that's the Loser and County citizens. And they did it without hesitation when I asked them to take on an incredible amount of additional work. Once again, thank you for your service. You do not deserve our support. Our engineering department. Our engineering department, did anybody know that if you look at the report that I give you guys every month, our engineer department got more bridges done over this pandemic than we got done in the past couple of years. They've spent incredible amount of time fixing our bridges. Once again, engineering department, thank you for your service. You don't deserve our support. Public defenders, conflict council, dealing with people who, uh, in the prison, who are, um, who are potentially COVID positive, but making sure that their constitutional rights are taken care of, those individuals we're talking about. Let's talk about the prison. Everything falls back on management in the prison. Mark Rukovich, Sam Hyder, uh, Robert Hietro, all these individuals, all of our, Jack Robshaw, all these individuals in the prison who have to step up to make sure that that facility is safe and secure, especially at a time of COVID, when people are coming in and out of there constantly. Thank you for your service, ladies and gentlemen. The drug and alcohol, uh, individuals, drug and alcohol has gone up over this pandemic as people are home and people are depressed. They're not gonna be there for that. How about Veterans Affairs? Veterans Affairs need assistance throughout this pandemic and every time Jim Spagnola and his crew stepped up. But they also don't deserve your support, is what you're telling the county workers. Let's go to the EMA. Does anybody deserve it more than the EMA right now? You're talking about emergency management in the middle of a pandemic. If you have any idea what Lucy Morgan, her team is doing throughout this entire process about setting up a testing site and helping people and working with the Department of Health and, and, and and providing PPE to the necessary nursing homes. Thank you very much, Lucy Morgan and your team. We just can't support you on these things. And the issue that you have here, ladies and gentlemen, is also, let's talk about law enforcement. Everybody on this council said during your campaigns, I support law enforcement, I back the blue. But our sheriff's department is involved in these things and they worked incredibly hard through this pandemic. Doing security at a testing site, uh, dealing with potential riots and, uh, and, and, and protests throughout the entire, uh, throughout the entire summer. Our sheriff's department stepped up time and time again. Law enforcement stepped up. And the DA's office is included in this as well as our probation officers in our judicial side of things. Law enforcement is also a part of this issue. And, you know, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna quote. So the reason why I bring these things up here, ladies and gentlemen, is because the county worker is not a nameless, faceless individual who sits at a desk and, and punches a, uh, uh, punches a card and then, uh, you know, just, just, just stands there all day and, and waits for, waits for the, uh, the whistle to go off so they can take a break. The county worker are those individuals who we talked about, who are incredibly creative and persuasive and smart, and I'm honored to work with them every single day because they did phenomenal things throughout this, uh, throughout this, uh, pandemic. When we had layoffs, it was the management employees that we're talking about here who stepped up to make sure that, that our system was always taken care of. And I'm gonna quote a very, very smart man, a man, a man that I've worked with over the past, uh, couple of years. I'm gonna quote a very smart man here, and here's what his quote is. You wanna support the people who help the people in our community. You wanna support the people who help the people in our community. Does that sound familiar to anybody? It should because Harry Haas just said it. And I appreciate Councilman Haas for his candor in supporting the people who support our community. When Harry Haas just added forty-five thousand dollars to the library, he said, you wanna help the people who help the people in the community. Well, that's the government workers that we're talking about here, ladies and gentlemen. And those are the people that were asking for your support. I love the library. Some of the library has some of my, my best memories from when I was a child. The Pedri family, listen, I read to my kids all the time. We're readers in this house. And I love the fact that you just gave them more money. That's phenomenal. They didn't even ask for that money and you gave it to them anyway. But it just goes to prove to you that there is money in this budget, in a no tax increase budget that to support the issues where you wanna support them. And let's talk about our budget and finance team. You know, I said, I know people are hurting and I know this year's a tough year. So I sat down with Brian Swett and Daniel Cunningham and I said, listen, management employees we're talking about here. And I said, I gotta come up with a no tax increase budget. I gotta come up with a no tax increase budget for county council. The first time I've ever supported, I mean, the first time I've ever pushed out a, a non, a, a first time I, I offered a non-tax in- increased budget in my time as county manager. It was extremely hard to do. Brian Swett's cutting things right and left. Daniel Cunningham was moving things around and we did it. And we came up with a no tax increase budget. And, you know, Mr. Griffith, who, who is very, very slow on, on giving any sort of commendations to people, called this budget incredibly lean and well put together. So I appreciate that. And Brian Swett and his team also gets a, thank you for your support. You don't deserve, uh, you don't deserve anything else from here. What are we really talking about with these merit raises? We're talking about an average of eight dollars a week is what we're talking about. No one's getting rich off of these raises. This is basically a cost of living improvement. We're talking about eight dollars per week. And there are three hundred and twenty thousand citizens in Loser and County, three hundred and twenty thousand people who you have the honor of representing. I know that the four public commentators who's talked tonight didn't like these raises. But I know that those are just one small voice of over three hundred and twenty thousand citizens in Loser and County, uh, who, who you also represent. I'm asking to support the essential workers. It's very easy to say, I support law enforcement. It's very easy to say, I support, I support essential workers and I support the frontline workers. Ladies and gentlemen, the county workers you're talking about here are the essential workers. They are the law enforcement. And by doing this in a no tax increase budget, I, I'm having trouble understanding why this is even, even on the table. Because we're not hurting the taxpayers here. Because no matter what, the taxes aren't going up, whether you give these raises or not. The only taxpayers who you are hurting when you cut this salary are the Loser and County workers who are taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
Mr. McGinley?
Uh, who's speaking?
Walter.
Go ahead.
Well, all I can tell you is, you know what? Mr. Pedri's a great salesman. But there's people in this county that are doing every bit of their job plus that, some, and are getting raises. I know a lot of nurses that aren't getting raises this year and they've went over and above. There's just no money. They don't get the money. They don't get paid. They don't get the raise. There's a lot of people that are hurting in this county. Their businesses have been shuttered. Their, 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 uh, uh, businesses have been reduced. Restaurant business has been cut back. A lot of people are hurting in this county financially. This is not the time to give a, a merit raise to anyone in this county. I get the fact that they're working harder. I get it. And I'm not, I'm not disputing the fact that these people in the county are working. There's people, how about the election bureau under the, uh, a lot of questions that we have, we can't even get people answered a phone. That's not customer service. That's not, somebody calls the Bureau of Elections and can't get a, an answer to their question. That's not customer service in that particular department. Yes, there's departments that are working and working hard and, and they should be. That's what they're getting paid to do. And I, I don't dispute that. When, but when the, there is no provisions for merit raises, there are no provisions for merit raises. And this is not the time to give merit raises, number one. But number two is we have no control over who gets the merit raise. But number two is we have no control over who gets the merit raise. It's a pot of money, it's supposed to be one point five percent, but that's at the manager's discretion. So if he wants to give somebody three percent and somebody else nothing, that's fine, he can do that as long as he doesn't overspend his pot of money. So there's favoritism that could happen with the merit raises, the process is broken. That merit raise process is broken, as Ms. Houck said, it is not a good way to give raises. It is, it's a way that the manager is able to play favorites, the manager is able to give money out to certain people that he wants to give it to and other people that don't get it. We saw that from the spreadsheet that was sent to us, to members of council where some members got three percent, some members got one percent, some members got zero. You know, it's all depends on what, what favorite you're having or what, what position you are in the non-represented. Yes, they don't get overtime, I get non-represented, you don't get overtime. They also don't go into work when they get, if they work the extra hours and they don't feel like coming into work, they don't have to come into work either. It's, it's a, it's, it's like if you work sixty hours and you wanna take time off, you can take time off. Non-represented employees are also getting paid, you know, they're, they're not doing this for free, they're getting paid to do this. And I understand, you know, there's a certain, and there is no ability for Mr. Pedri to say that we don't, we don't think, we, we don't wanna give them our support. Is not the case here. It's not that we don't support the county workers, we do support the county workers. And that's, that's disingenuous for him to even allude to the fact that members of his council don't appreciate the workforce of this county. I don't think there's a member of this council that does not appreciate anybody in this county, myself included. I appreciate the work they do. But you know what? The real worker out there in the regular public, they are getting raises, social security's giving us one point three percent and they're raising Medicare. So we're not getting raises. So there's a lot of people that are out there hurting, can't pay their taxes. And then when it comes time to give them, take their penalty away, council says, no. No, we're not gonna take that penalty away, we're gonna, we're gonna slap you with a ten percent penalty at the end of the year because you didn't pay your taxes on time. Yeah, th- there's just so many times you can go to the well for the people of this county. And it's time that we stop going to the taxpayers again and saying, you know what, yeah, we're not gonna give you a tax increase. But we're gonna turn around and we're gonna give money out for pay raises, much like the issue I raised with convention visitor bureau with Ted Wample. He comes on the line and he cries the blues and tells everybody on council how bad convention visitor bureau doing because of the pandemic. And then you ask him if he's giving a merit raise, oh yeah, absolutely. Well, what are you gonna give him a merit raise for? If the hotels are all closed and there's nothing going on in convention visitor bureau, but you're gonna give him a three thousand dollar raise. I get that. And the people of this county, we represent the people of this county. Dave, if he wants to be, Mr. Pedri wants to be the cheerleader for his workers, I get it, he's the manager, he's supposed to do that. But you know what, the people of this county don't appreciate giving merit raises when they can't get a raise in their pay. And they're working just as hard as county workers or harder. So I say the merit raises need to go away until we fix the process. If we fix the process so we know people are being treated fairly with the merit raises, then maybe it wouldn't be such a sore spot. But it's a real sore spot for people to say, well, you know what, if we wanna give the division head three percent, we'll give a division head three percent and we'll, we'll just cut a worker by one percent. That's not the way it should work. And, and because he's the manager and he can do that, that's, that's the way it goes. But I think merit raises are not something we should give to any county employee at this moment. Most of them are working from home, they come in and they say they need jet packs, they want overtime, some of them are getting cell phones. They don't give anything, they're always taking stuff. You want cell phones, yeah, we gotta give you a cellphone line, we gotta give a telephone stipend. I mean, come on, you're getting sixty-five thousand dollars a year and you want a telephone stipend? And you already have a cellphone of your own? Seriously? You can't give us five seconds of your time on your own cellphone, we have to pay you for your phone? This is just the kind of things that go on in this county that rub the taxpayers raw and it's time for it to stop. Thanks, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I, I just have one or two comments I'd like to make briefly. Uh, number one, uh, I think Ms. McDermott made, uh, several comments at the beginning related to the congressional services. But I think as you heard some of the discussion, there are many people in our county who work with us. Who really have put a lot of great effort into the situation that we're faced with with this pandemic. And, uh, you know, they all deserve at least a pat on the back. I do agree that this is a very difficult time. Particularly, it's very unknown as far as what's gonna be the results of this current situation health-wise. Uh, hopefully our future is better, but that's a little bit unknown still till we see some of the progress that may come out of it. You know, it's important for us to realize that the, the workers are the critical element in our county. They provide the services, they help people, they do things, they're a plus for the people that they serve. And I think that's very important. I have a very difficult time this year, uh, talking about this. Uh, because of all the situations that surrounds it, not the workers per se, but all the other things that surround it this year. Uh, as far as thinking the system is broke, I don't believe that's the case. The manager certainly has the obligation to evaluate his personnel. Uh, we do not, and we need to become involved in a day-to-day operation. So it's impossible for a county to do that. I do think that the county council is able to provide direction. Uh, in regards to merit increases and that would be something that, if the county council wants to pursue that, we can certainly do that. And if we can come up with what we think is a better system or a better proposal. I'll be more than happy to, uh, discuss that and bring it forward to council to look at. That being said, I think I've said enough, anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, Steve Urban.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, you know, I mean, it, it, raises are always a tough issue that's to speak about, you know, I mean, we're looking at a proposed, you know, one point five percent increase. I, uh, within the county for management employees or, or non-representative, uh, employees. But I, I do have to echo, you know, um, Walter's sentiments that people that are on social security and, and, you know, SSI, SSA. Whatever it may be are only gonna get a one point three next year. Those are the people that, that are, are pretty much the borderline of poverty and they're probably re- receiving assistance in other, uh, areas. And, and, and I find it very difficult to, to give out any raises this year in a tough time. I mean, I've got neighbors that are literally crying to me. I have people that I've worked with in the business community, uh, done computer work for them crying to me. That, you know, their benefits are gonna be running out within the next, either they're running out this week or next week or by the twenty-sixth. You know, these are people that own businesses within our community that are really at the, the minimum of getting like a one hundred and ninety-five dollar a week paycheck from the PUA, Penn- Pennsylvania, you know. Like the unemployment assistance. And, and after taxes, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a week. We're asking these people to live off of seven hundred dollars a month because a lot of their businesses have been shuttered, uh, through COVID. And, and it's a travesty to, to give out raises to the county employees at this point in time. Uh, for a job that they, I'm not saying that they don't do an excellent job, but you know, it, when it comes to merit increases, for simply performing. You, you don't really deserve a raise at, at a time when, when we are most in need. If you are excelling, it's slightly different. Come up, I mean, and I challenge county and then the county management to cut whatever corners you can without sacrificing, uh, quality of service and customer service. Come up with some additional creative ways to save money in your departments and then come back to the table. And say, hey, look, we've got this pot of money at this point, can we use it for a raise or, or simply? I, I, I mean, at that point, I'm sure you could utilize it, transfer it within your department and give, give your employees something additional. But, uh, to come back to the well a- at a time when I'm sure, you know, the school districts and municipalities are all hurting. Uh, we see what's happening even in my own hometown of Wilkes-Barre. I mean, their council is, is at odds right now and, and really going at, at the mayor. This is not the time to ask the taxpayers to, to fund additional raises for county employees. It's like, we're gonna kick you while you're down, slap you in the face or knock you in the teeth, you know, um, while, while we're hurting a- as a public. I mean, you know, I, a lot of us have, have taken a hit. You know, some of us probably on council in our own private sector jobs are, are not getting anything in twenty twenty-one. Some of us may have gone backwards, you know, um, in, in salaries. So i- i- it's, it's something that, I know it's a sore spot with, with maybe the county manager. But if you really truly believe in giving raises to your people, challenge them to do better, challenge them to be more efficient. Okay? Challenge them to put the technologies in place to make the county more efficient and make it much more organized. So we're not always challenging you, um, and coming at you or seemingly coming at you. Quite honestly, to be an effective manager, you gotta have some better organizational skills and have the people around you provide the information that we're looking for. And, and when you're not giving us those answers to the questions that we ask you time after time, we don't see that as excelling. We see that as unsatisfactory performance. And, and I can't reward that. And I'm sure that some of my colleagues can't reward that type of work ethic. So, you know, I know a lot of people do a lot of hard work, but, um, we wouldn't have all these points of contention at times if you simply did your job. Answer the questions that we ask and, and provide us with the detailed information that we're looking for. And at that point, maybe I could say, hey, you're performing or you might be excelling and you deserve a, a better raise. But until that happens, I, I can't be a proponent of a one point five percent increase.
Mr. McGinley? Steve, if you're not.
Ms. Radell, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I just, I'm a little bit offended the way the, the county manager said that what we're doing, uh, with these raises and if we don't vote for the raises. Is that we're saying, hey, thanks for your work, but we're overlooking you or we don't think you deserve this. I think it's quite the opposite for most council members. I think it's a very difficult decision to say that we're not gonna give someone a raise when we know the hard work that they've been doing. Like, I recognize that great work is being done and I, I think I, I try to do like li- little things just to, to show that I know that, that good work is being done. But, but just like considering the current climate, the environment with what's going on right now with COVID, where we're at, like, it's just, it, it's a difficult decision. And, and I, I don't think it's taken lightly and it, it's quite the exact opposite of saying, hey, great work, but eh, you, you don't get a raise. It's hard to, to say that to people you know that are, are working hard, but it's happening to everybody. It's happening to a lot of people in this county and, and like, you know, Steve mentioned, some people are moving backwards with salaries. I get it, I, I, I totally understand it and I, I don't want anybody to have to, to feel that pain. But, but most people are already feeling that pain, so if we ask them, you know, for, for more money, like, hey. We understand that you're not getting a raise, but we have to give raises just to show that we care. I think that, I, I, I don't think that's a fair statement. I, I think that we're, you know, human and we're very capable of caring about these county employees and appreciating what they do. But also recognizing that one year, um, without a raise while, while it's difficult and it's hard to digest, i- it just. Matter of factly, i- it just has to be done right now.
Mr. McGinley? Sheila?
Yes.
Yes, of course I agree with Kendra and it has been a very difficult decision for many of us. And we know these people that work in the county. And we say hello to them when we are in the courthouse and they are friends, they do a lot of things for us. But I think that we all tried to evaluate the, the time. And it is not the right time. I disagree with Mr. Urban in what he said, I don't think this should be an allegations or allegations against Mr. Pedri. He is doing exactly what he needs to do, he is advocating for his employees. That's what he's doing. And I don't think we should use this time to tell him that he's not doing a good job on this out, uh, issue, on that issue. That's another, another, uh, conversation. So what I just wanna say is that, you know, apologetically to many of these people, we're saying, we aren't gonna give you raises. Because it is not fair to many of the people who live in this county, most of them. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you, anyone else?
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Chair?
Who, who's speaking?
Harry Haas.
Go ahead.
Harry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I get a sense of where the council's going on this, but I just gotta give my two cents, you know me. And, uh, Dave, I appreciate the, the compliments, I mean, you called me a smart man twice. I need you to call Mrs. Haas immediately after this meeting, tell her that, and that will go well for me, so I appreciate that. But, um, you know, in, in all seriousness though, really, this is a very serious issue because this is people's livelihoods and we don't take this lightly, like it's already been said. And you know, we, Kenny mentioned, had to lay off people earlier this year and I do not wanna see that. I've been here before where we had to cut staff, it was one of the worst seasons of my life. I don't take any of that lightly. And we, we really need to understand that the taxpayers also are hurting out there, I think it's already been said. I don't, I don't take anything lightly, this is a public trust that we have here. And it, it's, it, it is a little disingenuous because we do greatly care about the county workers. I remember like seven years ago, our, our workers are, are admin staff are non-represented, didn't have a raise in seven years. It was, it was absolutely unacceptable and I support that wholeheartedly, even when we didn't have money, we had negative money and I supported that. But this year, I, I think it's been said enough times tonight, there are a lot of people struggling that you don't hear about and we do. We do, there's a lot of angst out there and I, I keep on seeing it bubbling up. You know, um, we, we, we increased the ARC payment one point five million last year. And I set the time, why are we doing this increase when we just don't have it? We should run it like our household budget and we had that debate and of course, council majority said they, they support it. And now here we are, and now this year, we don't have any ARC payment. But I thought we were the fiduciary, last year that was the party line, we're the fiduciary, we have to increase the ARC payment, we have to increase it. Now this year magically no ARC payment. It comes across as being disingenuous. We just wa- watched about seven hundred thousand dollars, six, seven hundred thousand dollars walk out the door for liability insurance. That's a management issue, that, that is egregious. And that needs to be discussed further, I was hoping to be discussed that in the work session. But I, I'm looking here and that every budget should be lean. Every budget should be as tight as this one, it's just not. We have, we've had increases when I think some, by and large, they weren't needed in some cases. We definitely didn't have to have the increase we had last year. Now we suddenly miraculous have a, a budget surplus, yeah, it's because taxes went up. It's not fair, it's not fair in normal times, it's certainly not fair during a pandemic. So I, I just can't support this right now. And I, I think really, I think it was already said, with some of these increases go out the door to our non-represent employees. You know, the word's out, some people, even on the admin team, are offended by that. That you have some people making very big salaries, they're getting three percent and people making twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars, getting one percent. You've really gotta reevaluate that process, it's offensive to some people. And I, I appreciate you being a cheerleader for the staff, I know a lot of them do, but some of them don't. And some see through that facade. So please, let's call this for what it is, we've gotta take the entire county at large and really think about every single person, all three hundred and eighteen thousand people in Loser and County. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban to remove all merit increases from the proposed budget. If you vote yes, all merit increases are removed, if you vote no, the merit increases stay as proposed. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vote?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
Just sorry. My, yes.
You cut a, is it yes?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Thank you. Moving on with Mr. Griffith's proposals. If you go Division sixty, sixty, judicial services of the coroner department. There is, um, under line item five nine nine dot forty-six, extraordinary equipment greater than five thousand dollars. There is a five thousand dollar number proposed. Mr. Griffith is indicating that we would do, reduce that to zero. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Griffith? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban? On to question.
Mr. McGinley, this is Joan.
Go ahead.
I, I think Mr. Griffith's, um, reason for reducing this was because we were spending it on items that were under five thousand dollars. So I would suggest and. So I would suggest and propose that we move that $5,000 to small tools and minor equipment because we really need the $5,000. It was just, it was in the wrong type of line item.
What line item would that be, Ms. Holgoff? Do you have that in front of you?
We should move it to, I don't have the number right in front of me, small tools and minor equipment. I'll look it up.
Small tools. And minor equipment. That's what you're suggesting?
Right, to move it out of the equipment greater than $5,000 to small tools and minor equipment.
Okay, so of course, we would have to take it out of this line item, which is what Mr. Griffith proposed. And then if we have a second motion to take the $5,000 and put it in small tools and minor equipment.
That's account number 54070, Mr. McGinley.
547?
540.70 is the account number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody understand? The first thing we're going to do is talk about the $5,000 that's in the proposed budget. And uh, the feeling seems to be, and Ms. Holgoff uh, has brought that to our attention again, it's in the wrong op, line item, so we would take that money out. And then if we have a second motion to put the $5,000 into small tools and minor equipment, that would be, as Mr. Griffith has informed us, 540.70. So the first motion was to take the money out, Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban. If you vote yes, the money gets removed. If you vote no, the money stays in the line item in the proposed budget. Okay? Roll call.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Dr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Your vote?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. So that money of $5,000 has been removed. Do we have a second motion to take $5,000 and put it into the small tools, minor equipment? Line 547. Mr. Schnee, did you make that motion?
Correct.
If Mr. Schnee makes a motion, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Sheila, yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
On to question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vote?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, you didn't, you didn't, Sharon, you didn't call my vote, uh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did see that. I'm sorry. Mr. Griffith?
Yep, yes.
As you know, I apologize.
Thank you. Moving over to Division 96, Under Governmental Agreements. Department 4810. Uh, Mr. Griffith's motion is, we have a number of 1,804,542. You would like to reduce that to 1,624,505, which is a difference of $180,037. Do we have a motion?
Mr. McGinley, if I could speak on that?
Yeah, we have to get a motion first, Mr. Griffith.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
All right. Does Mr. Griffith have a second?
Second.
Linda?
Ms. House? Very good. Now you can, go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Okay, um, resi- when I put this in our, a budget cut, I did not realize that we had already appropriated money in Resolution 2020.68. We already appropriated the funds for that. In order for me to make a budget amendment to remove that from the budget, we'd actually have to go back out and change that resolution or amend that resolution because the money's already been allocated by our council uh, with an 11 to 0 vote. So I'm going to make a motion that we remove that from the uh, uh, just remove that from my budget amendments because I don't think, quite honestly, the council's already voted to allocate that funding, and I don't think we can do that by budget amendment uh, because we already have a resolution. We would have to amend the resolution, I think, I believe is how we would have to do that.
Are you removing your motion then, Mr. Griffith?
I, I, I would be, I would be glad to remove my motion if somebody wants to remove their second.
Mr. Haas, Ms. House, are you removing your second? Ms. House?
Yes, I removed the second.
All right, so we don't have a motion or a second? Correct?
Correct.
All right, then, the proposed number stays in the budget as proposed.
Correct. Thank you. I, I apologize for the error.
No problem. It's a very correctable error, so no one's harmed. Everybody's okay. Moving over to Postponed Amendments, which is on the next page. Uh, we left some information there in regards to the Department, Division of Corrections. And it pretty much deals with the utilities at the Minimal Offenders Unit and also the Main Prison Unit. Do we take them all together in each, each uh, section, or do you want to take line by line?
I would be interested in taking them all together since they all deal with the utilities. Maybe separating the Minimum Offender and then the actual prison.
Everybody okay with that?
It's Walters Amendment.
Uh, well, I mean, we could, we could start and take them all as a group as Ms. Sedman liked to do. That's, that's perfectly fine if we want to do them as a group.
Okay.
Start at 2234.
We're going to do the Minimal Offenders Unit first? So do we have a motion to the proposed amendments by Mr. Griffith? Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? Okay, we have electricity, gas, sewer and water. We have a motion and a second to reduce them, electricity from 28,000 down to 20. The gas from 3,500 to 2,000. Sewer from uh, 10,000 to 8,000, and water from 37,500 to 25,000. And you can see the results of those reductions. 8,000, 1,500, 2,000, 12,500. Questions or comments?
Hi, this is Leanne.
Just go ahead.
With um, when we had gone over this, well, before, when um, the amendments were done, I don't remember getting specific answers from Mr. Rakovich about the electricity and gas, you know, all the utility payments on changing. Did, did I?
Cut out.
My notes, and I don't, I don't have them.
Chairman McGinley, I'd be happy to answer uh, every amendment that's on this list.
Okay, and Mr. Rakovich?
Yes, it is, sir.
Go ahead. Go through, we're just looking at the Minimal Offenders Unit right now, so you can speak to each one of those. Electricity, gas, sewer and water.
Okay, for the Minimal Offenders Unit, as far as the electricity, I, I'd like to point out the fact that at the main facility, the electricity below, that the budget for 2020 was $150,000. We reduced it at the main facility by $20,000 to my proposed 100, the county manager's proposed 130,000. Uh, 10,000 of that was put towards the electricity at the main facility, I mean, at the MOU, which took it to the 28,000. Currently we're budgeted, in 2020, we're budgeted for $18,000. I have already requested a transfer of funds in the amount of $10,000 to cover the proposed bills uh, for the remainder of the year. We still have to receive the bills for October, November and December. If you look back historically at electricity, uh, which is quite interesting when I look through it, 2016, the actual was $483. 2017, the bills were $35,742. 18, it was $19,900. Uh, and in 2019, 2019, it was $22,025. Uh, I'm expecting the electricity at the Minimal Offenders this year to exceed $25,000 to $26,000. What we need to keep in mind is that utilities directly related to the state population. Uh, due to COVID, I remember, so, we've been averaging at that building alone probably 75 to 100 in most places. Buildings capable of housing 238 were completely full. We've been averaging around 230, I mean, 135. So next year, if our um, we see an ease in COVID, I expect our population is going to rise, and we absolutely will need that $28,000. For the utilities. Uh, uh, it's difficult to...
Mr. Rakovich, you should be speaking a little bit louder. Uh, I think you're dying out, Mr. Griffith.
Okay, uh, it's extremely difficult to uh, you know, limit the number of showers to less than one a day uh, to restrict the electricity that we're using in that building. So as far as electricity, I think I'm well within um, being reasonable or a, a good estimate as to what we're going to need for that building. Uh, for 2021 will be $28,000.
Go through the rest of the utilities, if you would, Ms. Rakovich?
Absolutely. Uh, the gas, we had requested 3,500. Um, there is an amendment for $1,500 reduction. One thing that we should take a look at, as stated before, inmate population, uh, if it increases, will probably exceed that 3,000, uh, $2,000 easily. Um, we installed new gas dryers inside the building uh, for clothes drying. So I expect that that bill is going to go up a little bit higher. Uh, the, the weather, we are heating in that building is gas at this point in time. If we have a difference in, in temperatures, last year we had a pretty mild winter. If we have a difficult one in 2021, uh, we will far exceed it. The, the sewer bill, historically, when I look back at it, 2016, the sewer was 33,500. In 17, it was 14,500. In 18, it was 5,111. In 2019, it was 7,126. And we had asked for 10,000. Um, same type of issue, if we have an increase in our population, which I expect we will in 2021, uh, the 10,000 will be necessary. And the same thing with the water. Uh, water, historically, we had bills as high as $81,699 in 16, $50,000 in 17, and $23,000 in 19. Um, I, I expect that that 37,500 is what we potentially will be using in that year. I also understand that there's a small increase for businesses in the water bill expected for 2021.
Okay.
And that would be all my comments on the Minimal.
Other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, Mr. Rakovich, and, and I know we did these, uh, the McClure Energy Savings Program, and, and apparently, that's not working very well at the prison uh, for the Minimum Offender Building especially. But I'm looking at the sewer in New World right now as we speak, and I see the sewer, we only spent $4,000 so far year-to-date, and we only have one month left to go. I know, and I see electricity where you s- uh, I, I see in electricity where you did transfer the $10,000. And if you're going to go with gas dryers, your electric's going to go down apparently because I'm sure the dryers now are electric, correct?
The, I repeat the question, please?
I said, are the dryers at the pri- at the Minimum Offender Unit electric right now?
They were, yes.
Yeah, so you're going to go with gas dryers, so that's going to minimize the amount of electricity you're spending at the Minimum Offender Building. But the question, the more important question is, why is the electricity so much higher this year than it's ever been before, when we just spent all that money on the McClure Energy Savings Program?
Actually, it's not that much higher than it ever was. In 2017, it was 35,742.
In 20, in 2017?
Yep. You have that right there in your narrative, Mr. Griffith.
Right, okay. So, but, but again, are, are we not, are we not saving any money?
I believe we are saving money on the, the um, uh, project that was implemented with the lights, um, LED lights, et cetera. But as, as the popul- I, I also have to expect that my population is going to increase. And, I mean, we've been, uh, I'd like to have it even lower right now due to COVID, but you know, the numbers are down. You double that, you have doubled the people inside that building, you know, taking showers. Increases your sewer, increases your water, increases your uh, gas heat for the, to heat the water. Um...
I, 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 yeah, I certainly understand what you're saying, Mr. Rakovich, but, but what I'm saying is that your sewer bill is really not that much, your sewer bill's only $4,000. You have one more month to go. So, you know, I, I understand. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You're saying we only have one month yet, but we're billed quarterly on that? Um, and usually the last bill of the year, when I, let me look at my actual, that we've paid. Um, MOU sewer, 15,903. That's not correct. That's, oh, that's the main, I'm sorry. You had, you said you had New World open?
Yeah, I do.
And what is, what is the uh, your current that you're seeing on that?
Uh, let me see, New World has, for, which one, sewer?
Yes.
Your sewer, your sewer currently is 394876. That's what your total is as of right now. That's, that's how much money was spent year-to-date. And you budgeted in 20, you budgeted $10,000 in 2020.
For over the last five years, we've never had a bill um, less than $5,111.
Well, I mean, and that's basically what New World's showing here is, I mean, the bills don't look very high. So I mean, you only spent 300-some dollars in, in February for sewer, and it goes on and says 200-some dollars in April. You know, so it's really hasn't, the highest bill you had was August, which was $1,247. So that's probably when the population in the Minimum Offender Unit went way up. But you're all, I, again, you, you budgeted 10,000 in 2020, and you only spent 4,000 so far. So you, you still have 6,000 left to go. And, and, and you asked for an increase in it next year.
Well, we a- we asked for 10,000 for, for 2020. I, I, I'm, I'm trying to make, you know, educated guesses, looking at historical information, what our expenses were. If, if uh, you know, council feels that I can make that on $8,000, then they can vote that way. And I, I'm, I'm not going to argue the facts on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? I, I just have one quick comment. I know with my electricity, uh, I just got a notice of 5.2% increase uh, beginning shortly. Um, and I think probably across the board, you're probably going to see that kind of an increase 3% to 5% or 6% depending on which of the providers you're going with. Any, any other questions? So we have a motion for, by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban, to uh, take the amendments as proposed by Mr. Griffith for the utilities. Electricity, gas, sewer and water for the Minimal Offenders Unit. If you vote yes, we'll go with the budget amendments as proposed. If you vote no, the proposed numbers in the budget stays. Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schneese?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith? Mr. Griffith? You're muted.
Mr. Griffith, you're muted. There you go. No, you're still muted.
I'm, I'm sorry, Sharon, yes.
And Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
No.
Six yes, five no.
They pass. Now we're going down to the main facility, and we have electricity, sewer, and water. So do we have a motion to, uh, adopt the proposed budgets by Mr. Griffith?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith? Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. On to question. Mr. Rakovic, you want to speak to the main facility?
Oh, once again, in twenty-sixteen, our electric bill was a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. Twenty-seventeen, it was a hundred-and-fifty-six. In twenty-eighteen, it was a hundred-and-forty-five. Twenty-nineteen, it was a hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Um, and currently, we still have November, December bill, we're over a hundred-and-six thousand dollars. Uh, I believe that we'll need that hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, uh, to be able to pay our electric bill for the facility.
Okay.
The, the same margin that we gave for the, uh, minimum offenders' unit, if our population remains low, um, so the budget amendments, it's pretty good, if our population increase in the facility in twenty-twenty-one, uh, and the numbers that I presented, I believe is what's necessary for us to, to run and pay those bills. We, we reduced the electric bill from one-hundred-and-fifty thousand in the current year. We reduced it by twenty thousand in our proposed budget, um, which I think was, you know, a fairly good decrease. The, the sewer from previous budget years, um, and the water, once again. Uh, we have received, we have seen some decreases in the water bill. I mean, historically, we had hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar water bills in twenty-sixteen in our main facility. We're now at a hundred, uh, requesting a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars reduction in twenty-sixteen.
Questions for Mr. Rakovic?
Um, the only, the only question I have, Mr. Rakovic, is that the, the numbers still are, are still considerably low, unless you're anticipating a, a huge, uh, increase in those particular bills for next year. The, the, the history obviously doesn't dictate, and, and the problem that I'm having is with the, if we have history that's showing, uh, a lower amount, and we went with the McClure Energy Savings Program, we should be budgeting less money, not more. And I, and I, I certainly understand your situation, where you're saying the population affects your utilities, and I get that. But also, the ability for us to spend all those millions of dollars for an energy program and not getting, uh, any, any kind of benefit from that, apparently at the correctional facility, I think it's a little bit distressing, but I think we should, we should be budgeting the same.
I think you're incorrect, Mr. Griffith. There are one-time drops. Okay, so, so McClure will actually, uh, be giving a report on that, but it's a one-time drop. We're not gonna see it drop every single year in, in any of those savings. It's a one-time drop, times out by ten different years. So when you look at, uh, the electricity in twenty-sixteen, it was a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars that we actually spent. A, and now, you know, we're proposing a budget of a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. It's, it's a fifty thousand dollars from what it is.
I'm, I'm sorry, and I do understand that it's, it is going down, 'cause I'm looking at, I'm looking at your comparisons, you had a hundred-and-fifty-six in twenty, uh, seventeen, you had a hundred-and-forty-five in eighteen, so it is going down, and a hundred-and-fifteen in nineteen, and now you're at a hundred-and-four year-to-date in actual, this year. So it is going down, but we're budgeting, and, and, and to your credit, you did budget less, 'cause this year you budgeted a hundred-and-fifty, and you dropped it to a hundred-and-thirty. But all I'm saying is, you, you know, you, in all reality, I don't think you're gonna spend anywhere close to the hundred-and-fifty that you budgeted this year. 'Cause right now, you're, you're, right now, you're at a hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars, you have one month to go, unless you think you're gonna spend another twenty dollars this year, or this month.
And you're correct, in twenty, in twenty-twenty, I don't believe that I will spend the hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that was budgeted, which is why we reduced it to a hundred-and-thirty for twenty-twenty-one, which is a twenty thousand dollar reduction on one line item.
Right, but, but, but again, you never spent a hundred-and-twenty thousand in electric yet, so, other than back in the day before we did the energy program. So, I, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, sixteen, seventeen, each one of those was over, it was over a hundred.
I think, Mr. Rakovic, one of the big factors you've alluded to a couple of times is the fact that your prison population is down due to some of the accommodations that came out of the pandemic. So as a result, some of the utility usage is comparable as far as it's in a down direction because of the fact your population's been that way. Okay, any questions? We have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban, to adopt the budget amendments as proposed by Mr. Griffith. Electricity would go from one-thirty down to one-twenty thousand, sewer from thirty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand, and water from one-fifteen thousand down to one-hundred thousand. Roll call, please.
Ms. Dermott?
No.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
Sorry, no.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schneese?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
No.
Four yes, I'm, four yes, seven no.
Okay, those amendments that were proposed and were defeated, so we're moving on. We're now at public comment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to make a clarification as far as I was, as I stated in the beginning of the meeting. Um, the conditional agreement was for two things. One was to make sure that there was an opinion from the state D C E D with regards to the twenty-year limit. And number two was that, uh, the developer, uh, companies, our director, to go to all three taxing bodies to make the same presentation, uh, for the amendment that was made as far as, al- also, in, in lines with the original plan as per the state, uh, TIF statute. So that was my comments from the beginning of the meeting, and that was also my comments from when the conditional agreement was passed by the redevelopment authority. So Mr. Torrance said that the solicitor of the redevelopment authority said it was with regards to also the presentation. No, that was only for the twenty-year limitation to be addressed, not for how the presentation was to be conducted. As you will look, if, in the, if, in the present, in the, uh, email I sent you on page seven of last month's redevelopment authority meeting minutes, you will see that. So I just wanted to point that out. Also, I would like to point out, as far as, uh, with, with Mr. Parsnick said about the, um, election office, uh, I think that the state should pay for the increases of the election office expenses uh, from their rainy day fund or the governor's executive budget, because he's making all the edicts on behalf of the state for the elections. So along with the secretary of state. So I think it should be the governor or, uh, the legislature out of the state rainy day fund that pays for all of it. And while they're at it, they should compensate the small business owners that have had to shutter their doors permanently during the COVID out, during this whole COVID pandemic. I think that would be great, too. And I hope the manager makes that same impassioned plea he made to you guys, uh, during this, uh, voting session as he does, as he does to the, uh, state, uh, delegation with regards to, uh, our people being suffer, uh, our people suffering during this COVID pandemic. And also, on the work session, I'd like to address, uh, the Hazelton Lurda. Uh, I would like to see a fifty percent Lurda or a TIF rather than a hundred percent TIF, because that doesn't benefit Hazelton City, and also it doesn't address the issue of the housing problems. 'Cause you have families stacked on top of families, especially, that should have been proven true during the COVID outbreak. When you had all those families from New York and New Jersey moving in with relatives who live in the city to shack up, and that caused the outbreak, or caused the spread, excuse me, because, uh, people, residents from New York and New Jersey that were the epicenter was, uh, came here in Hazelton and basically shared, you know, they unknowingly shared the virus. So I think, uh, that should be noted, and also the lining of the, of the, uh, landfill where the development is going to be, uh, I believe that needs to be tested out by D E P in terms of contaminate, possible contamination from, uh, uh, what was dumped there to fill up the, uh, the, the old landfill. Uh, because there's contaminated bits. I'm finishing up, Mr. McGinnly. So I would think that those, uh, questions need to be addressed to the developer. Like I said, a fifty percent Lurda or a TIF would be better than a hundred percent Lurda. Thank you.
Other members of the public, please.
Ron Knapp, Mr. Mc-
Mr. Knapp, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Chairman McGinnly and, uh, council members for, uh, listening on something I have for, uh, to address. Uh, I wanted to thank Rhonda, Joe, and Virginia for the forty-year anniversary and dedication to Luzerne County. One person who stood out to me was Joe, who is described as one who isn't afraid to ruffle feathers as a public defender. This is a good segue for the topic I am going to address with council and manager Pedre. Manager Pedre mentioned Mr. Longhorn of the D E P who has been in contact with him through email correspondence. I was wondering if he could pass this bit of information off to Mr. Longhorn. I've been walking along the levee for years, just above the hundred-and-ninth Artillery Bridge that crosses over onto Route eleven from Wilkes-Barre. As I was walking, I ran into a friend who wants to remain anonymous, and he brought to my attention piles of asphalt, milled product, or mecanum that is placed inside a fenced-in area with storage units in that same location at the end of Simpson Street. These piles are within proximity of an inlet that runs into the Susquehanna River. He stated, after the years of this being there, the piles have eroded and then, and ends up washing into the river. Just up from Simpson Street between the ball fields in a Wilkes-Barre, in the Wilkes-Barre garage area, are piles of mecanum or milled asphalt in that proximity of the inlet of, into the river, Susquehanna River. All this material uses oil and sediments, which leaches into the river as the piles are dwelling away as it rains and makes its way into the river. The taxpayers are subject to paying for M S four tax or the dreaded rain tax. And this is an example of municipalities falling short in raining and sediments and pollution making its way to the river. Just so everyone knows, I do not have suicidal tendencies. I also wanted to state, it was a wise move to not agree to the one-point-five percent increase for Luzerne County employees and the departments. Councilman Urban is correct in that it would have been like slapping the taxpayers in the face or kicking them when they are down. Again, it was a very wise move to have, at least, or the seven who voted against the pay increase. That's all I have to say. Have a good night now.
Thank you. Other members of the public? There was somebody else who was trying to speak there.
Uh, Mr. McGinnly, Jason Carr from Salisbury, Pennsylvania.
Carr.
Yeah, th- thank you so much. I first, I would like to thank, uh, Councilman Walter Griffith for having the, um, leadership to bring the, uh, resolution forward to, uh, eliminate any raises for the non-exempt, or excuse me, the exempt employees of Luzerne County. Uh, as a, as a, an investor, as a property owner in Luzerne County, it's greatly appreciated. Uh, and as everyone in the public that's listening right now, and, uh, everyone on council knows, uh, the same taxpayers that Mr. Griffith, uh, represented tonight with his resolution, with his amendment, um, and stood behind the people that, that pay the bills for the Luzerne County employees. Uh, the, the person that advocated for the raises was actually the person, Mr. Pedry, who would not give the same taxpayers, uh, a break on the ability to pay their property tax bills through the end of the year. So, um, I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank Mr. Griffith for putting Mr. Pedry in his place tonight. Um, secondly, uh, Mr. uh, Councilman Harry Haas, uh, he brought up the issue of the, of seven-hundred thousand dollars walking out the door tonight. Or regarding the liability insurance policy, uh, you know, we, we, Mr. Haas, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Haas did vote for David Pedry to be the manager of the County of Luzerne with, no experience, no management or executive experience beforehand. So, uh, hopefully, Mr. Haas can, uh, hold or garner a committee and, and take a look at what's happening at, the bigger picture uh, of, in Luzerne County. And thirdly, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that, uh, you do a, an excellent job of advertising the meetings for Luzerne County, providing both a phone outlet for someone to listen to council meetings as well as an ability to, on the computer, uh, watch through YouTube. And, uh, all the information is, uh, presented correctly, uh, and according to law, uh, it's greatly appreciated. The only thing is, in order to get to the information, it is buried within the agenda of council. And for a, a novice person wanting to participate or wanting to look at it, is, is it possible that that information can be more readily available on the first page of the Luzerne County Council page, uh, on, on the website? I mean, I would, I would guess ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent of the people that want to participate would not know to go into the agenda to look or to find the information to participate. Uh, and, uh, I would think, uh, with, you know, the power that you hold within the county, you know, if you could consider putting that information more readily available for someone just to be able to click on Luzerne County's page, Luzerne County Council's page, and be able to see the information upfront with the ability to participate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Others, members of the public? Go ahead, Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you. Um, just to put some things in the, in the context, if it helps council out, or if it doesn't, though, that's okay. Um, as far as the TIF issue that was, uh, discussed in West Pittston, um, I was confused as much as Councilman Haas about some of the things that were said. And upon the attorney's, uh, clarification, basically, it seemed the statement was this in layman's terms. If you give me more money to get phase-two, uh, utilities done, I can start selling houses there and possibly pay you back quicker. Um, and I, I realized council went along with that, uh- And I realized council went along with that. And I don't fault anybody who doesn't want their money back sooner. What I would have liked to have seen was an agreement with those people that there, you will pay us back at that point in time. There will be no further modifications or adjustments. And there's a personal guarantee, you're not going to default on this. I don't know if it's possible for that to happen at this point in time, but I would appreciate it if someone could look into it. As far as Mr. Pedri's statements, they were, they were admirable. I thought it was a really great speech. I thought it was impassioned, but I, I would say along, you know, with some of the members of council. Because you're not getting a pay raise this year doesn't mean we don't value you as an employee or don't value you for the work that you do for us. They're not the same thing. This is an economic downturn and, and I think one of the big points that everybody overlooked is it's not right now. It's not this month. It's not this quarter. There are going to be peripheral repercussions from this. What's the financial and the tax situation for the county as an entity, a government, going to look like next year and the year after? And what's it going to look like for its residents? And again, just to put things in context, I, I feel honored that, that some council members quoted my personal situation. And, and if you want to use it, it's fine. I don't have a problem with it. I put it out there on my own, so that's what you get. But just to put it in context, someone in my direct household that is part of my livable income got their one and a half percent pay raise that they received at their job last year taken away this year. And when people complained about it, they're like, it's the best we could do. At least you still got a job. So it's not that I don't understand that yes, county employees are also county taxpayers, but from some of the information that was bannered about, we're talking 250 employees/ taxpayers out of 300 plus thousand residents in the county. You, you gotta balance it out. Nobody wants to, to not get a pay raise, but we also have to exercise financial prudence. And in compared with the fact that we have to take a tax anticipation note every year and this year it's for 16 million and the total debt leaning over the county that no one talks about, really? I mean, come on, it's not the end of the world. You know, someone in my family was given the choice, well, you can give up the one and a half percent or you can give up the job. What do you want to do?
Can you wrap it up, Mr. Dwyer, please?
Yeah, I am. Thank you for, for allowing the comment time.
Yep, no problem. Other members of the public?
Yes. Still speak up now? Sam Troy here, can you hear me?
Now I can hear you, but a little bit louder, Mr. Troy. You sound like you did when you first came on and when you got a little closer to the mic or whatever, you sounded better, so go ahead.
I know you're waiting with bated breath to hear what I have to say, Mr. McGinley, so I better say, say it loud.
Well, we want to hear it, so if, if you would say it loud, that would be great.
Just two comments in general. I, I, sometime this goes back before the pandemic, when Mr. Pedri had his yearly meeting. I wonder if he's going to have it this year, by the way. I don't assume he is, but the public.
It's required by the charter, Mr. Troy.
It is required, so it's going to be held then. That's good to know. I have a question I'm going to ask, that won't be for a few weeks, I assume, yet, right?
I ought to speak to Mr. Pedri about that, I'm not sure.
Well, anyway, last year I mentioned to Mr. Pedri, and I wonder if anybody on council has an opinion or a comment on this. I asked him about an energy audit. Now, I understand we're going through a terrible pandemic and the county has other things on its mind. But the county also has a large debt service. I understand, what is it, about 270 million or something like that? That I know part, the charter indicates, the charter requires that a certain amount is paid every year, I guess, if I'm correct in that assumption. I don't know what the amount is. But that doesn't mean the county should get away from trying to save money wherever they can and find new sources of revenue and stop the bleeding, so to speak, on expenses. So I, I thought, I don't know if the county's ever done an energy audit or if anybody even knows about that. And resulting, and, and, and one thing that could result from that obviously is, is looking more closely or vetting the situation and determining where money could be saved, energy-wise. And that goes not just for the buildings, but then the vehicles and so forth. And the city did one, not, well, City of Wilkes-Barre did one several years ago, but I thought the costs were, were too high to justify it. Actually, they paid something around five or six million dollars to Johnson Controls. I don't know if somebody has an answer for that. I also want to make just one other general comment that I've been dying to make for I don't know how long. I, I know we have one lawyer, I know maybe more than that, Councilor Sheila Siedman, and of course, Mr. Pedri is a lawyer. You people know about the separation between church and state. And one thing that upsets me as someone who's, someone of a gnostic is the fact, I, I don't know what, I haven't been inside the courthouse for a long time. I don't, I assume we're having the usual decorations, Christmas decorations and Hanukkah and whatever outside. But Thomas Jefferson was, you know, one of our founding fathers, was very tuned in and talked about the wall between separation between, wall of separation between church and state. And you know, you can talk to anybody in the ACLU, this probably would offend people, but I think that the county should take a second look at those extravagant decorations. Okay, at least if you're going to have them, mute them down a little bit. It doesn't have to be like last year, a 50-foot Christmas tree, whatever it was. Just bring it under control. I mean, this is an endorsement of religion. I might be the most religious person in the world, but still be offended by that because the county is a, is a governmental entity and it should not be endorsing any religion. I don't care if they provide for every religion, whether it's Islam, Judaism, Christianity, they could put all the decorations out there they want to appease all the different religious sects, but that still doesn't justify it. I just thought somebody might have a comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Troy.
Thank you for your attention.
Sure. Any other members of the public?
Mr. Manta.
Go ahead, Ms. Manta.
Last but not least, I have to find, I have to ask the question to Mr. Pedri. Why is he so passionate about giving a raise to people and, and not passionate about saving the taxpayers' money? Mr. Griffin is working his tail off as a councilman to save the county money. He should be applauded for trying to save the county money. And all the county council, they're all voting against the savings that he's trying to, to save the county. So, you know, where is all the money going, going to go if, if you don't save the money? You're, 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 you're going to spend the money and it's going to be gone and then they're going to have to raise taxes. I understand this is the first year that they didn't have a tax increase, okay? But where was his enthusiasm when the, the rain tax people came over there and said, let's get rid of the rain tax? All that was voted down. And you know, I, this is one thing that is a craw in my, in my, my, my hip that we can't let these people dictate to us taxes, especially a, a, an authority, like the sanitary authority. And everybody's tightening their budgets, but yet these people are still sending these bills out that are unwarranted and unwanted by the taxpayers of Luzerne County. So, so if we can shine a light on that again, and, and another note that, that, that we could shine a light on again is let's get a solicitor for the county council. I mean, it, it just like seems that the things that they should be focusing on, they're not. Because the, the solicitor for the county council would mean a big savings in, in, in all of these lengthy meetings and, and, and unjustified things that, that things are going on. I mean, yeah, it, it has to be.
Manta, if you can wrap up, please.
Yes, sir. It has to be fine tuned to what the taxpayers need to know. So like I said, the last seven words of the Pledge of Allegion and the first three words of the Constitution is what else whereby. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
Any other members of, of public?
You owe me a coffee, Walter.
Any other members of the public, please? Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment? We have a work session.
Mr. McGinley, could I ask a question before we adjourn? It's Walter. Have, have you heard, have you heard anything from IT about our laptop computers for the council members?
I would have sent you a message if I got any information. I, I talked to, as, as you saw, I asked Mr. DeMaro to work on that and I haven't got any information.
I think it's, I think it's really important that people have webcams so the general public sees council in session as opposed to not having webcams. Some of us have used them and I think that's very important. If these are public meetings, let's make the council members visible.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. It's now 10 o'clock. We'll take a 10-minute break. I think everybody needs a, a little bit of a break and then we'll have a work session. And one of the items on the work session would be the request from the Hazelton Creek property. And we'll put that on first because I think those gentlemen have been hanging on the phone or hanging on the meeting for a long time. But we won't get back in session until 10 after 10. Thank you.
All of them?
Not all of them, but there's enough that. Not all of them, but there's enough that I'd like to add. Okay, it's ten minutes after ten. We're going to call the meeting to order. We're not going to have a pledge of the moment of science. We've done that at the start of the voting session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross? Ms. Halk?
Here.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present?
All present.
Okay, additions or deletions to the agenda?
Just one addition, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
I'd like the council to consideration RFP for insurance broker services for 2021. I just sent out an email, and I put the resolution in Word format for you.
Uh, Mr. Ross, are you? Last year, we did that. I thought it was a multiple-year construct.
It is, but it's within our purview, I believe, sir.
Okay, I'm just saying, I think there's a construct in place, but we can bring it up.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
Present.
Mr. Seaman, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Unheard, motion carries. As I indicated before we went on break, we have some people with us in regards to the requests, regards to the Hazelton Creek property, which is number two on the agenda items. And you have the information in your packet. Uh, is it Mr. Rinaldi?
Yes, I'm here, sir.
Mr. President?
Can you hear me?
Uh, I can hear you very well, Mr. Rinaldi. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Thank you for taking the time. I appreciate not only your dedication and the time constraints that we're all under here, but thank you for taking the time to listen to us tonight. Uh, my name is Attorney Raymond Rinaldi. I represent Hazelton Creek Commerce Center Holdings. I have with me the principal, Mr. Robert Keel, available on the telephone or through the Microsoft Teams if there's any questions for members of council. Um, my client is looking to develop one of the last pieces within the city of Hazelton, uh, ripe for development. Um, this comprises approximately 393 acres, not only within the city of Hazelton, uh, but partly in the township of Hazel. Um, it's one of the largest private developments. Um, we're moving forward with the land development plans. We received land development approval last night uh, within the city of Hazelton, uh, to develop five buildings uh, for five and a half million square feet of space. Uh, what my client is asking for tonight, and I saw that you had attached to the agenda the short proposal that we put forward, uh, we're requesting LRTA approval. Um, we've already received LRTA approval from Hazel Township, the city of Hazelton, and the Hazelton area school district. Uh, the last piece, as always, is to come before Luzerne County Council to once again ask for that request. We're asking for a full hundred percent abatement for a ten-year period uh, from the date to which the buildings would be assessed. Um, the current real estate tax collected on the site, the entire acreage, uh, is $16,000 approximately, and that's for all three taxing bodies. Those monies would still be remitted to those taxing bodies, the county school district and the municipalities. Uh, the abatement would be on the improvement, um, that would be constructed on the property. Uh, as I indicated, this project is moving forward very rapidly. Uh, my client has asked to start construction in the spring of 21, uh, which I think is a great project for, um, the construction industry, labor, uh, all the things attached to that, and then also a permanent workforce that would be located primarily within the city of Hazelton. We estimate when this project comes fully online, based on the current assessments located within, um, Luzerne County, um, fully assessable, the three taxing bodies would receive between three and a half to six million dollars in tax revenue, exclusive of all the other added benefits that would be available for the citizens of Hazelton, uh, and Luzerne County for that matter. Uh, if there's any specific questions, uh, we'd be happy to address them, uh, from anyone in the audience and/or members of council.
Well, we'll be members of council. Uh, Mr. Rinaldi, anyone from members of council who would have a question they want to propose at this time?
Yeah, Steve Urban here. I have a couple just clarification questions. That's all, just for additional information. Um, the proposed site, is this basically the same site, uh, where the amphitheater was supposed to be developed under, like, former Mayor Barletta?
Yes, uh, inclusive of that and additional acreage, yes.
Okay, and then, uh, any of this area where the river dredge from New York City was used to fill the old Hazelton landfill to reclaim the site?
Uh, it would encompass the Hazelton Creek Commerce, or Hazelton Creek, um, reclamation site, yes.
Okay, and then, uh, maybe the other question was, is, uh, what happened to the developer who promised to build the amphitheater and got a K O Z approval back in the county commissioner days? And, uh, I guess, you know, any, any? I'm assuming there's been no movement with the other taxing bodies at that time?
There was never a K O Z approved for the site, sir.
There wasn't? Okay.
No.
Okay, anyone else?
Um, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter. Go ahead, Mr. Snee. I'll let you go ahead of me.
Let Mr. Griffith go, and then Mr. Snee, please.
All right. Okay, um, Mr. Rinaldi, the only question I have is, is the hundred percent abatement, does that go from the time you started construction, or once the buildings are completed?
Once the buildings are fully assessable by the county, the ten-year abatement would begin. Under the LRTA program, once the, um, occupancy permit is issued, the ten-year abatement would begin, assuming your assessors would have the building assessed, the improvement assessed. By that period of time, each building would receive the, uh, the abatement.
And what does, uh, what does the developer plan to put their warehouses? Or is he planning on putting, uh, some other type of structure?
Um, the buildings proposed right now range in size from, uh, 500,000 square feet to the, one of the largest would be 2.2 million square feet. Uh, it would be a mixed-use development. Uh, the plan is to hopefully attract, uh, manufacturing to the site, but also warehousing as well.
Okay, so, uh, when you talk about manufacturing, it'd be, uh, like a factory type of job of some sort?
Yes.
Okay, and, and the other thing is the, you know, one of the, one of the big issues for me is the hundred percent abatement. Uh, I would, I would be much more amenable to a sliding scale abatement rather than a hundred percent right from the, right from the gate out. Uh, you know, I would, I would certainly not, uh, balk at the chance to, uh, change that from a hundred percent to possibly maybe fifty percent when the buildings are done, and then slide it up gradually to a hundred percent. So the county realizes some revenue before the ten-year term is up because I guess the project probably will take a year or two to build. So we're not going to realize any tax revenue for about 12 years, I would guess, if we do a hundred percent abatement, correct?
Well, uh, I disagree with that to a degree. Uh, the first thing is there are many challenges on this site. Uh, as you're well aware, this was a former mine land site, deep and surface mined. Um, for a period of time, it was an, uh, a landfill, two landfills, operated by the city of Hazelton and areas. This is still an act two site that still needs remediation, meaning capping the old landfill. There are environmental issues that have to be addressed for commercial development. One of the impediments that we also have, um, is, uh, the utility cost to bring to the site. One of the upgrades that, uh, has been requested by PP and L, uh, is an upgrade, uh, approximately $10 million. That's just one utility. Without this LRTA abatement for the full 10 years, this project would not be able to move forward. Uh, all three taxing bodies have approved the hundred percent abatement. Um, there's still some challenges on this site. Uh, without this abatement, um, this project, it would not be able to move to fruition.
What's the dollar amount on the abatement estimated for the 10-year time? Based on the value?
So, right now, I, in my proposal, I show you the actual dollars collected by the three taxing bodies, and that's approximately $16,000. That would still be continued to be remitted to those taxing bodies. Uh, based on, uh, million-square-foot buildings located within, uh, Luzerne County. One was the Lowe's Distribution Center in Pittston Township. The other was the American Eagle Outfitters, uh, building, a million square feet. Um, based on those assumptions, we estimate when the project comes fully online, accessible to the taxing bodies, the dollars collected would be between three and a half and six million dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGinley.
Mr. Snee?
Yes, Mr. Rinaldi?
Yes.
City of Hazelton, through bill, building permits and other permits, how much are they, uh, to make with these fees?
Uh, I don't know what the building permit process, uh, will cost, uh, but all those permits and fees would be, uh, collected by, you know, uh, either the township of Hazel for the part of the project and that side of the township line, and obviously, uh, within the city limits. Um, needless to say, the city of Hazelton is excited about this project. Uh, the amount of workforce located within the city limits. For those of you who are not that familiar where the site is, uh, it's but a mere few blocks from, you know, City Hall, uh, close to train stations. All the roads within this development will remain private so that the city doesn't have the taxing or, or, um, doesn't have to utilize the city services for snow plowing, maintenance, roadways, et cetera. Uh, all this is private development.
How much of that land was capped that you're using? And how much of, how many acres are still with 55-gallon barrels on? That were dumped there illegally?
Um, this site has been well investigated, sir. Uh, there was a baseline environmental report that was conducted, um, approximately 2004 or prior to that. All, all items have been identified. Obviously, the city landfill, and there was a plan in place approved by DEP back in 2004 to declare this an act two site, and what parts of that site needed to be remediated. Most of that has been completed. There are still items to address with regards to capping certain areas of the site, moving an old bottle ash dump, uh, to another site, part of the site, uh, to cap it. All those will be complied with in order to get final development here.
Yeah, and the, and the jobs you're bringing in, uh, what wage range are they in?
I think it'll be dependent upon the type of use. Um, but, you know, I, I wouldn't want to speak to the specific, you know, dollar range. I wouldn't want to be misquoted. Um, but anywhere from, you know, uh, light manufacturing, warehousing, uh, these will be, to a degree, very life-sustainable jobs within the city. And this will be three, estimated three to 5,000, um, employees located within this park.
Three to 5,000 employees?
Yes.
Okay. With the school district, there was a deal worked out, uh, with the GIPs building.
Yes.
Uh, could you comment and let my other council members know what occurred there?
Well, the, the district agreed to, uh, a 10-year abatement. Uh, in lieu of that, they requested a payment of, uh, $30,000 each year of the abatement. They also requested, and my client has agreed to, um, demolish the GIP building. Um, I believe it's in the Freeland Borough. Um, the estimated cost of that, I, you know, I, I wouldn't, I don't have final figures yet.
I, I think it was two or $300,000 that said in the paper.
Well, I, I.
I don't know, I don't know where the estimates came from,
but my client hasn't fully assessed what that cost would be at this point.
Well, could you have those costs to us in the next, in the near future?
My client has agreed to demolish the GIP building, um, at, at a cost, so it's not costly to the school district.
Anyone else with questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Seaman, go ahead.
And I don't know if you're the right person to ask Mr. Rinaldi about this, or if it would be our solicitor, Ramilda Prokamo. Um, one of the things that I know that members of council are disturbed with whenever they get one of these tax abatements or give one of these tax abatements is that once the tax could start, was assessed and could start being collected, uh, they immediately go in to the assessors to get a reduction in taxes. Is there any way that we can ask that that not be done for the, maybe the first five years?
Uh, we can, uh, we can look into that, uh, to see whether that's something that's, uh, even viable.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that, you know.
I don't know if the statute allows it or, or anything, but, you know.
Mr. Seaman, I'm sure, as you're aware, you're asking my client to waive his constitutional rights, and I don't know if he'd be prepared to do that right now.
That's the next level, that's the next level question, even if it's, uh, something that can be done. But we'll look into it for the general, that general proposition.
Other questions?
I could, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Go ahead.
Sheila, thanks for asking. I think you voiced very good concern there. And, no, we, we talked about this before. It violates tax fairness across Pennsylvania. You can't do it. But, um, it truly happens all the time, makes these, these kind of projects very unattractive. And, uh, we keep on getting burned by them. But, I mean, I see the value in it, but, um, I agree with Councilman Griffith as well, a hundred percent. LRTA is a, is a K O Z, just by another name. So, uh, I, I would hope perhaps we could, um, have better negotiations with the manager, maybe sweeten the deal a little bit. Thank you.
Other people on council? Other people on council?
Hi, this is Leanne.
Go ahead, Leanne.
So in 2005, Hazelton Creek Properties, um, I, I guess at that point purchased the property, uh, or with the agreement of City of Hazelton. So it started to remediate and reuse that area. Um, what has been done with it since then? Has it just been sitting there? Have you been trying to clean up the, the site since then?
No, I, I was involved with the previous, previous operator. Um, it wa- it was bought out by a larger entity uh in two thousand eighteen. Um, but I was on the project back in two thousand five. Um, a lot of the environmental conditions uh required under the act two agreement set forth by DEP have been remediated. There are still some areas that need, um, there's a capping, a two-foot cap of, of uh regulated filler or clean earth has to be placed over a, a section of the old city landfill. Uh, there's a section in um that was the old bottle ash dump from back in the forties or fifties that has to be removed and placed in an area set forth by DEP and then capped. Um, if you're familiar with the site, you know, it's an old uh deep and surface mine. It's, it's like a big bull leading from, let's say nine twenty-four on the high side coming down towards, there's a railroad tracks and some large uh stripping pits and then curving back up to uh three oh nine. Um, there's a considerable amount of earthwork that my client will have to perform to place the buildings of this scope and size on this site. Um, but they're prepared to move forward with this project. Um, they've noticed, his clients have noticed the determined workforce of the Hazelton area and Luzerne County for that matter. Um, people, developers are getting pushed out of just because of cost and expense out of the Allentown Bethlehem market. Um, and now they're coming here. You can see the size and scope of some of the manufacturers that have come here and some of the warehouse projects that have come here. Uh, and there's been recent articles about the amount of warehouse, storage, light manufacturing uh space that is needed and necessary. Um, and I think it will be good for the community and, and the greater Hazelton area.
Um, Mr. Rinaldi, I know you said that he would plan on starting spring of twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
Is there any, is it going to be um, you know, like one building at a time or planning to start all of them at the same time? Date that you would have?
Well, it, it would be determined by the market. Um, i- i- if there's great demand, uh, I'm certain my client will want to build the buildings as quickly as he can. Um, these are not small buildings. The smallest is five hundred and fifty thousand square feet, the largest being two point two million square feet. Um, these are large uh buildings. These are not metal pole barn buildings. My client has a process where he uses concrete uh wall system, not block, uh poured concrete. Um, these are large structures. It may take close to a year to construct some of these buildings. Uh, but there's a phasing, definitely, just because of the size and scope of the matter.
Uh, do you have anybody in mind that would be willing to lease these out? Uh, I know you said manufacturing, and that's always a wonderful thing to bring into the area. I just don't know if you have any ideas of anybody that would be interested?
Well, I, I, I hope you understand, we, we wouldn't be able to disclose those potential clients right now.
Yeah.
Uh, there's confidentiality agreements, uh, if I've mentioned any of the names, but I hope you understand.
You do have people in mind?
Yeah, yes. Uh, and due to the size and scope of these buildings, these are Fortune one hundred companies.
Other questions? Um, Mr. Rinaldi.
Yes.
Uh, I think if you have, we'll look back at some of the um LERTA situations that we've dealt with as county council. We've never authorized a hundred percent abatement for the full ten years. Um, I believe most of them, you'd probably find that there's a abatement of somewhere between five and seven years and then a sliding scale, you know, ten percent a year on the latter part of that uh ti- ten year timeframe. Uh, so that's probably, I know myself, that's what I would be, be considering if, if indeed the council decides that this is a project. Uh, what kind of um reception would that be from your client?
Um, I, I'm sure I have Mr. Keel. Hopefully, he's still on the phone with us, uh, and I, and I'll have him speak to that point, but
Okay.
I, I'll, I'll say this, if I can, before he joins us. Uh, number one is, as I indicated, there are some severe impediments to fully developing the site. As I indicated, just the one cost alone from one utility company is ten million dollars. Um, that's a great expense to overcome, uh, not including all process of of, of, of land development and acquisition of the site. Uh, that's one. Number two is, there are still some areas under the DEP agreements, act two agreements, to clean up the site, to remove the health hazards potentially or exposure to the health hazards um to the citizens of Hazelton. That has a cost and expense. Without the LERTA, um, the full ten year abatement, I know it's a big ask, but this project can't move forward without that, that request. Uh, as I indicated, the total dollars collected on the three hundred and ninety-three acres is sixteen thousand dollars. Um, if my client doesn't move forward with this project, you may not see further development for, I don't know how many years to come.
I understand that, but I'm just telling you where we have been in the past. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the North Point developments that happened in the county. Uh, they had major, major obstacles also because they were working with similar kind of uh land in preparing for buildings, et cetera. I know, I believe at one point they had spent over fifteen million dollars uh in preparation to, uh, costs, uh, which is rather significant, as you, I'm sure you agree. So, um, it is what it is unfortunately, and uh, you know, that land is there because of the fact that they had significant uh obstacles to overcome. So, I'm just throwing it out there so you're well aware. I don't want any surprises last minute to you or, or us.
No, I, I'd rather have that frank discussion a- a- as we speak here, so um, it, it was a tough uh request, I know of the other taxing bodies uh for that. Um, the school district made a passionate plea with regards to uh the concerns they had. Um, as I indicated, all this development is, is within private development. Uh, no, no cost for uh roads uh for the city. Uh, everything's to remain private. So, uh, the request from those taxing services, we would not be utilizing, you know, uh, all, all, all those different things. Um,
Very good. Is your client going to speak or?
Uh, I don't know. I can't tell if he's
Right, I'm here.
Oh, you're there, Bob? Okay. You might have to speak up, I think, Bob.
Any better?
Yep, yeah, a little bit.
Okay, so, yeah, if anybody has any questions or wants to ask away.
Mr. Kyle, is it? K I E L, is that correct?
It's Keel, K I E L.
I'm sorry, Keel.
All right, it's not the first time. Won't be the last. Don't worry about it.
I'm sure of that. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't do a very good job the first time.
Questions from uh the client, anyone? Mr. Keel?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, I have a, a quick question, if I could.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Keel, it's Walt Griffith. Uh, the only question I have, and I, I just wanna, I just wanna tag on to what Chairman McGinley asked as well, is, is that I, I as one council member will not support a hundred percent LERTA. I just, I'll put that right out there for you. I mean, as a voting member of this council, I will not, I will not authorize the ability for someone to just come in and develop a property and, and, and enjoy the benefit of a, a glorified K O Z. Cause I didn't think K O Zs were good in the day when they were first implemented, and I don't think a, a hundred percent LERTA is a good idea. So I want, I just want to be as upfront and honest with you as I could possibly have, be as a council member and, and possibly give you the option to, uh, you know, either modify your LERTA proposal to council, so we, and make it more attractive that you would be able to get a favorable vote from the council. I, I mean, I'm just speaking as one person. Uh, and, and I just will tell you that, uh, you know, that's not something that I would support. I, I certainly understand the hurdles you have to deal with, as, as Chairman McGinley's talked about. North Point, you know, he used the same issue, and, and then we had another developer that came in and said the same problem, and then when they, they gave him the uh, the thing, he turned around and sold the land to somebody else. So there's some bad history with this whole project, not, not to say that you would act in the same fashion. But that's basically my feelings on the LERTA is, you know, I, I'm certainly for all, for development. I think that it's a great project. I think to bring that many jobs into Hazelton and into Hazel Township is a fabulous, fabulous thing. And, and to create jobs like that, I think is great for our area and great for our county. Uh, to remediate that site with all the, the pollutants and things that you have to deal with, I certainly understand your, your, your uh cost factor and your, your, you know, the ability for you to have to deal with that remediation factor and get all of those things. But as a representative of the taxpayers, I don't, don't think it's fair to uh the, the people of the, of the county to just walk away and say, well, you know, you don't have to pay any taxes, cause they, they certainly don't get that benefit. And I certainly don't feel it's appropriate to, to give that to a developer, so I, I hope you understand my feeling and uh I look forward to, you know, maybe a, another proposal of some sort, but this one, the way it sits, it wouldn't be something I would support, so. I just want to let you know that right up front. Thank you, Mr. Ke- Keel, for your attendance. I appreciate it.
I appreciate your comments, Paul, sure. And uh, and uh, I, let me just point out a couple of things. I'm quite familiar with the other projects and with Point and those other ones. Those are small potatoes compared to this thing. I will invest approximately four hundred and fifty to five hundred million at this site. It's a private investment, probably the single largest investment anywhere in Luzerne County. And it's speculative development, and it's a huge amount of risk. And I've been doing this for over thirty years, and I've got about seventy million square feet across the country. And what attracted me most to this piece of, piece of land on this project was the community of Hazelton. It's not in great shape. We all know that. This particular piece of land has been in its current condition for what, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years?
Yep.
So, what have you gotten off of that over the eighty year period?
Nothing.
Nothing. And I will tell you, there's a good chance, if I don't go through with this project, she'll be sitting at it for another fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years. You'll get nothing again.
Mr. Keel, Bobby Schneel, never be able to be built on again. Nobody's putting that kind of money on. This is a once in a life, I'm not in favor of LERTAs, but this is a one, once in a lifetime opportunity for the city of Hazelton.
I have done about thirty-five million square feet of development in Pennsylvania, in the state of Pennsylvania. And I have never once asked nor received or gotten anything from any city, state, township on an economic basis. And the reason for that is because I don't believe you should get something as a developer unless you absolutely need it. On this piece of property or project, it's absolutely needed. It is an extensive undertaking is one thing, and then the second piece about it, where the LERTA most comes into play is attracting the companies. That's how you get the chance of getting the best companies out there. Cause they pay the taxes. I don't know if you realize that. So, the developer isn't getting the benefit of the LERTA, cause it's, the taxes are direct pass through to the customer. So you know how that math works, right?
Yep.
That's what I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to sound like a um, any, any, any ways by a jerk here. I'm just trying to explain you, explain to you the importance of how this all works. I am, I, I am personally taking a very significant risk, and sure, I'm in the risk-taking business. I get that. But the city of Hazelton needs a lot of help. This is the piece to help turn that city around. Cause not only permanent jobs, three, four, five, six thousand, you know, you don't know that number, you know, until the market starts dictating the kind of clients. But we do know the approximately nine hundred construction jobs. A lot of work to be thrown at this marketplace. And we're going to get with Luzerne County Community College and State High School to start getting some job training for the appropriate candidates will be another benefit to the city and the county.
Mr. Keel, it's Sheila Sadek. Where are you from? Where's, where are you?
I am based out of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania.
Uh huh.
And I, most of, most of my career has been spent in the Allentown Bethlehem marketplace doing this real estate development.
Okay.
And I also did some projects in uh Chicago, Milwaukee, Minneapolis, and Michigan over my career.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else with questions?
Yeah, I, I have a quick question too. Go ahead, Leanne.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, this is Leanne. Um,
Mr. Urban was trying to come in before you, um, Miss McGinn.
That's, that's all right. Ladies first, I'll defer to Leanne.
Thank you. Uh, ju- just a quick question. Do you plan on having local construction um companies doing the work? I know you said you want to be able to get some students from L C C, but do you plan on trying to keep um, you know, local businesses to do the work?
The way I approach every project, out of all the cities, towns, or townships I've gone into, is to use the local labor first. That is rule number one. My contractor, who I'd be using on this project, just finished the um Lehigh Valley uh Hospital up in Hazelton. So he's very familiar with the trades in that marketplace. And he's, he's done a tremendous amount of uh construction work throughout the entire Northeast. So we will go right to the existing job trades, labor pool market in the city and the county.
That, that's very, very good to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, yeah, quick question here. As a, as you were stating that you're a speculative developer, why uh that track the land and not somewhere else within Luzerne County where you wouldn't have to remediate so much? Um, I guess during your assessment, you know, I mean, if I was an investor, I don't know why I would want to turn over an area where it might have contaminants and other things like that versus other tracks where we have development that sort of sits empty on, you know, other areas that are already sort of pre-developed. That might be empty.
You mean much more easier and less risky to develop?
Yeah, correct. You know, like maybe somewhere in Hanover Township or uh other land tracks and maybe pits and pits in township. I know that they're pretty full now.
Well, I, I, I'll share with you why, right? So, throughout my career, I have developed over four thousand acres of land. And probably eighty-five to ninety percent of it uh was farmland, mostly throughout the Lehigh Valley Bethlehem area. One of my most uh rewarding projects I've done to date was the old Bethlehem Steel Land. When Bethlehem Steel went out of business in nineteen eighty-five, they had eighteen hundred acres down along the Lehigh River. And it was eighteen percent of the city tax base, so the city wasn't getting any tax revenue from it because Bethlehem Steel didn't pay taxes on it. So I went in there and acquired a large site and put up a one point two million square foot speculative warehouse building and leased it to Walmart. And then I went a couple yards over, or a hundred yards over, and put up an eight hundred thousand square foot building and leased it to a company called Zoo Lily. And between both buildings created about three thousand jobs in two, in two million square feet. That, to me, was rewarding. So clearly, I could go out and buy the next farmland, buy the next open urban piece of development. But when I came across this site in the city of Hazelton, it became more to me about doing what something should be absolutely rightly done for the city of Hazelton. I want to redevelop that site, cause I, I believe from my years in, in doing this and my experience, it's going to have such an impact on that city in a positive way with the unemployment, people on welfare, people on food stamps, the crime, the drugs, unemployment. I think you get something like this kind of development going in there, get some job training taking place. It could be a real winner and have such a rippling effect. And then you have to think about all the other businesses that feed off of this, right? The grocery stores, the gas stations, it just keeps going and going. It's like, it's like dropping the pebble in the lake and the rippling effect of the rings that keep going around and around and around. So that's why I'm going to put my money on this site. Is it risky? Yes, it's very risky. But I, I believe in my own capabilities. I believe in the support I've gotten to date from Hazel Town, the city, um, and all the other people, DEP. And, uh, there's been a lot of people in this, uh, community up there that has worked very hard and a very fast schedule to make all this come together. And did I ask, did I ask this, this school board for a hundred percent LERTA? I absolutely did. Did they, yeah, have issues with it? Sure they did. Did they come back and say, we'd like to get this done or that done? Did I agree to it? Sure I did. Because I'm not going to let something, um, relatively small in the scheme of this entire project and the impact it can have, you know, getting away. Lot of people in that community have already invested a lot of time and energy into this project. And I don't want, I personally think it'd be a terrible thing to have it fall apart this late in the game. So if there's something specifically you would like to see, share it with me.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking from, you know, an economic standpoint too, you know, I mean, I understand development's going to breed other development and possibly improvement into the, the local economy and the local housing market, uh, and, and whatnot. Um, I'm just, I guess maybe my only concern right now is, is I, I work in a, in a, in a distribution center myself during the day. And I, I'm kind of concerned with maybe possibly like the oversat- saturation of warehousing, uh, space in Luzern County at this point because we're having a very difficult time finding, uh, people in the sort of selection, uh, occupation and obviously CDLs. Um, those are two areas that nationwide are, are sort of problematic for private industry and, and Fortune one hundred companies at this point. Um, you know, I had brought up a while back that maybe we need an, an additional driving school or something like that for, for CDL licenses. Um, because there, there's money to be made in, in the industry. It's just that there, there's not enough workers to go around in this market, in, in my opinion, based on, on what, what I see every day going into work. And, 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 and organically, it's driven up, um, hourly rates um, for employees, which is a good thing. It's very sustainable. I mean, but, you know, we're talking selectors. I mean, like when Chewy came in, they started at around probably fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour and obviously during the COVID period, the warehousing environment has seen a huge spike in their hourly rate. Um, I mean, I, I know, you know, selectors at this point that are making in, in the twenty-five to twenty-seven dollar an hour range. Um, and that's before overtime. So, you know, I just, I don't know if we're moving too fast in the warehousing space or not, but, uh, I, I'm just a little concerned with having enough people to work in all these open box facilities. Um, and, and obviously the competitive environment that, that it brings with, with not having enough of population here. So, yeah, I guess, you know, it depends on what type of mix you have, uh, coming in here as far as your client base and how many people they're going to transfer in. But, you know, we only have X amount of people that can do X amount of work here.
Yeah.
That, that's my, my biggest concern.
Well, I think.
From that environment.
To your first point, there is clearly a shortage on drivers, no doubt about it. There's like a whole generation of, of people that did not go to pursue that as a career. Yeah, basically the, uh, millennials didn't want to do that, right? Um, there is a significant amount of, um, unemployment, as you're aware, in Hazelton. That's, but, but it, it need, it needs proper job training and a big concern feels to help fill a lot of these, uh, positions. And then thirdly, uh, to, to handle the truck driving situation, this particular site has great rail access coming into the site to service, uh, a little over half of the square footage of the park. And with the way the industry is going and then more importantly with the way the COVID has changed in the street, we feel that'll be a big plus for this, uh, this development.
Okay. Uh, if we have no further questions, Mr. Rinaldi and Mr. Powell will, uh, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, for Mr. Keel, uh, I'm actually from down in this area, Mr. Keel, well aware of that property. Like I said, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity, uh, for the city of Hazelton. Uh, not only that, the city of Hazelton more or less is landlocked. So this probably is the only development that will ever take place. And is it risky? It's very risky. And, and I applaud you for your commitment and, and to, uh, the city of Hazelton and the people of Hazelton. I mean, they're very hardworking people. Most of them grew up in, uh, the garment industry, working in factories and, uh, lady garment industry. And you know what that was like? And then there were people that worked in the coal mines from the city of Hazelton. So you, you're going into where you're gonna come across very hardworking people. And I thank you for your commitment to those people and the city of Hazelton.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Rinaldi, Mr. Keel, we'll, uh, any further questions or we'll, we'll send them to you and ask you to please reply as quickly as possible. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for hanging on for so long, uh.
Thank you for your commit, thank you for your commitment to the citizens of Luzern County.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Uh, just so everybody's aware, we got to watch our time. We're now five minutes of eleven, which I think we're pushing at this point. See if we can get through a couple of items here. Uh, the monthly division reports, you probably have those in your packet. If you have questions, please forward those and we'll get answered for you. But, uh, I think we have to get the other two items if we can. Mr. Griffith has submitted a resolution in regards to manager Pedri. I think this is, uh, resolution that we have seen this prior to this meeting at different times throughout the year. Mr. Griffith, you want to comment?
Uh, yeah, and basically my, my resolution reprimand is dealing with the ability for the uh, manager to allow budget and finance, the ability to transfer money to an account that was not authorized in the resolution. Uh, that, that should not be permitted. That's our charter clearly gives the council the legislative power to make resolutions and gives the executive the ability to veto that or send it back to council if he feels there's an option that he feels is not appropriate in the resolution ordinance or motion. And that wasn't done. And consequently, what happened was the transfer of money, not, the, the, the transfer of money wasn't in any way uh, not appropriate. It was just not put in the account that the council designated as part of the resolution. And, and it's, it's a procedural thing that should not be permitted by this council. Uh, we, we obviously make the rules and we make the laws and the manager has a procedure to follow if he feels our resolution or laws are not appropriate. And that wasn't followed and they arbitrarily just decided to put it in a different account. And that should not be permitted. So that's the, that's the thumbnail sketch of the, uh, resolution. Uh, the money should have went into the proper account as designated by the resolution and it did not. So.
Okay, Mr. Swets, are you on?
I am.
Yes, I, I, and if I just, uh, can just have a few moments, uh, my recollection is that there was a discussion, uh, with, uh, council, uh, with Brian Swets, uh, and it occurred, uh, in the works, on the work session on October twenty-sixth, seventh. Uh, and if you listen to the audio, uh, beginning at, uh, uh, thirty-eight oh seven and thereabouts, there was a discussion, uh, between, uh, Mr. Swets and Councilman Griffith. And during that discussion, uh, Mr. Swets, uh, advised that the original, uh, line item was not the correct, uh, line item and Councilman Griffith was absolutely correct that way to, uh, uh, correct that would be to amend, uh, the resolution. And that substantively is, uh, what should be done. Uh, the, uh, resolution should be amended to reflect, uh, the correct, uh, line item. Uh, at that point during that work session at that time, uh, I will admit I should have intervened and, uh, said that the proper mechanism uh, is, uh, to amend, uh, the resolution and that's, uh, the council can still, uh, amend the resolution, uh, which would be substantively and procedurally, uh, the correct route, uh, to, uh, follow. Uh, but there was a discussion on October twenty-seventh in the work session, uh, uh, about this issue, uh, which I, I thought was resolved, but, uh, obviously it wasn't.
And, and, and I, if I can get in here, Mr.
Let Mr. Swets and then you'll have an opportunity for, please. Mr. Swets? Mr. Swets, are you muted?
Yes, thank you. Uh, during that meeting, I did discuss that the correct account was the other income account, that this was additional money. Uh, I believe Mr. Griffith brought up that he asked me or my team to look at it and I said, we did and we missed it. So, you know, the account that it sends the correct account, I agree with Ms. Kalkamo that the easiest way at this point is really just to amend the document because it was just a difference between an expense and a revenue account in the reserve fund. So it's still in the reserve fund. It's just a procedural issue. So I, I don't believe moving it to an incorrect account to match what was passed is the right method. I think the easier method is just amending the document that was passed.
Okay.
And, and, and I, uh, again, my, my concern is not the ability for us to fix the problem. My, my concern is the ability for the manager to allow a, a, a duly authorized resolution to be, to be changed without council's knowledge. That's the question. Had, had I not gone in the new world to see that the money was transferred to the wrong account or to the improper account in your termination, it wouldn't have never been identified at all. And it would have just went along and it would have been just done. The issue that I have is when council passes a resolution, it should be followed by the executive branch regardless. And if it's a problem, then it's up to the manager to bring that to council and say, he has five days, he looks at the prop paperwork, he sends it down to you and you say, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, this isn't the right account. You need to send that back to council and have them change that resolution. And that's the procedure that I'm having a problem with, is that that's not being followed by the manager. It's just, well, go ahead, Brian, if you want to change it, you change it. And that's not fair to what council's job is. Council makes the laws and executive branch is supposed to execute those laws. If you feel there's a problem with the resolution, then the manager should have brought that resolution to council within the five day period and told us that resolution is not correct. It needs to be changed. That didn't happen. In fact, nobody said a word about the whole process at all. And if I didn't see the new world and say, why was it transferred to the wrong account? We probably never would even recognize the fact that it was, the, the resolution was never followed. And that's the issue. I can understand it's a simple fix. We just amend the resolution. But if we amend the resolution and you transfer it to another account, that's not the way it's supposed to go. That's the, that's the issue that I'm having, is the manager's responsible to make sure that the laws are followed as passed by council and that wasn't done.
Okay, anyone else? The only thing I would say is that I think it was a mistake, obviously. And we'll have an amended resolution with the proper information. I do not feel that this shouldn't result in a reprimand because I think it was a matter of a mistake. You know, I don't think any of us are immune to that part of it. I know I have made many mistakes.
Well, I, I, no, I, I agree. I mean, mistakes made, mistakes are made, but they need to be identified and they need to be.
Fine. Well, you, you did the identification, Mr. Griffith, and we appreciate that. Now we'll make the correction.
So, so what are we going to do about the, the, uh, the issue about the, uh, the question that I asked about the, um, authorization of the settlement? Is that, is that a mistake as well? Are we going to be able to do a resolution reprimand on that? Let me, let me go down the list.
Wait, wait a minute. That, that's not the item here that we're talking about.
I understand, but there's numerous mistakes that are made that need to be identified and put as resolutions of reprimand. If they're mistakes, I get it, but they need to be identified. I made a mistake. I got a resolution reprimand. I made a mistake. I went on Facebook and I said some things about a council member I shouldn't have said, apparently. And so I was reprimanded for it. Nobody said, oh geez, my officer just made a mistake. No, that doesn't work for me. But the manager makes a mistake. It's okay. We just, it's a mistake. He could fix it. Let's just be consistent and, and, and identify mistakes that are made and put them in, put them in a personnel jacket so that when we have an issue, we can go back and review them.
No, I disagree with that totally on that because the manager's in a different branch of government than we are. And it's clear in the charter that's a separation. And his responsibilities are different than ours. And I don't believe that our responsibilities deal with reprimands.
Mr. McGinley, it's Linda.
Yep.
Um, can I just ask, who wrote the resolution that had the incorrect, um, uh, account number in it?
I did. Walter.
Okay. And so if we have a resolution that, that, you know, usually we proofread them pretty well, but if there's a mistake in it, what should the proper procedure be? So if, if the management and with the separation of management and legislative body, that's fine. If the management determines that there was a mistake in a resolution, what is the proper procedure to follow next?
Well, I think the proper procedure, Ms. Howken, uh, I think you probably, hopefully will agree is whenever the mistake is, uh, found out, ascertained, at that point in time, it should be brought forward. And in whatever corrective action that is necessary or in order to get the resolution done in the proper manner.
Right.
Okay, that could happen from any party.
I absolutely agree with that. I absolutely agree with that.
Okay.
I think that Mr. Griffith rightfully has a problem with the fact that that was not the procedure that was followed. That someone determined to correct the mistake, but not to do it through the legal channel. And we do have enough lawyers involved in this county, including one on council, including the manager, who know that the document that's passed is going to have some meaning. And so I, I have a concern as well as Mr. Griffith that the proper procedure was not followed. I understand there's a, an easy fix for this, that there was a mistake in the resolution. But the proper procedure is not to just take it upon yourself and do something that was not legislatively passed. If there was a mistake made in the res- in the resolution, then the mistake should have been brought to council's attention so we could correct it. We do a lot of corrections. We correct terms of office for people that we appoint when we have an incorrect term. Things are brought to our attention frequently. This wasn't, I don't know what else, you know, might have been, uh, have happened that hasn't been brought to our attention. That's the crux of it. The fix is certainly something we should do, but the procedure has to be correct. Otherwise, it's, there's no oversight. And yes, the manager is in a separate section of the government, but we oversee him. He works for us and he works at our pleasure. And he needs to respect the procedure. So I think that it's all about making sure that the correct procedures are followed and that we don't have incorrect legal documents that are out there on the records for everyone to see when our finances are not going to follow what was, what was passed legitimately by the legislative body.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
I mean, I think the first option always with most lawyers, if there's an issue that happened that wasn't procedurally correct, is they try to remediate it instead of punish it. And I, I look at other legislative bodies, whether they're state level legislative bodies or the federal legislative body and executive branches. I don't see that many reprimands. I mean, are they handled differently? I think you try to remediate. I think you try to remediate first. And then, you know, understand the procedure over and over again. But I don't think we need to be punitive. I really don't. I know it must be frustrating. And Walter, thank you for, you know, identifying this issue. But I think the easiest thing and the kindest thing and the most, the thing that most people, I would think, that are in executive positions and with bodies that are administrating, they would just take the remedy before they would remediate it before they would punish it.
And if I might, Mr. McGinley, I understand the desire not to be punitive and I think that's fine. But what I'd like to see is an acknowledgement. I personally would like to see an acknowledgement from the manager that the proper procedure would have been to just come back to council and say, look, this was incorrect. And I think that would be fine. But if you were, if you were on a board of directors of a corporation and the CEO did something that was contrary to what the board of trustees had voted on, whether it was correct or not, that board of trustees would expect him to come back and say, by the way, I don't think this was done correctly. Can we fix this? Or here is how I would like to fix it. And that would be fine. I don't think we've seen an acknowledgement that the proper procedure wasn't followed and that's the concern.
Linda, is your acknowledgement that it should be a resolution of reprimand?
I'm not even talking about the resolution of reprimand. I'm not talking about being punitive. I'm talking about the fact that I really think the issue is that it was something that was done unilaterally by the management without coming back to the legislative body to say, look, I know you passed it this way, but I'm sure this isn't what you meant to do. We need to fix it because it can't go in that fund.
Well, I.
That's the concern.
Mr. McGinley.
If, I think if there's.
Hold it one second, who's speaking?
Well, I was.
Are you still?
I apologize.
That's all right, go ahead.
Well, no, Ms. Howkin, finish your thoughts.
No, I was just going to say, I think that, you know, if we see some acknowledgement that, you know, there was a better way to handle this than just unilaterally taking it upon yourself to make the fix without notifying anybody about it. If you see some acknowledgement of that, you might not be talking about punishment. So that's my two cents.
Okay, Mr. Pedri?
To council, the first I heard about this is when Mr. Griffith put another reprimand motion against me. I would say that, you know, my five years of county manager, I thought I've done pretty well for myself, but this year I've had numerous motions to reprimand, numerous motions to termination. It's as if new members of county council specifically don't like me. I'm not saying that's what's happening here, but it's as if somebody would say that. But with this particular, with this particular issue, I found out about it. I went to budget and finance. Brian said that he moved into the correct account. I'll deal with that, I'll deal with the issues internally. Yeah, I agree that if it's, if whatever council says in the budget, in the resolution, I should have, that would have been an opportunity for me to be like, is this the right, this is the right account number exactly from where it's at? I don't often get the resolutions the next day after, after the council meetings. So I'll get, so when I get them, I'll be closer, I'll keep a closer eye on exact resolutions in case somebody tries to slip one in there or accidentally makes a mistake or something along those lines, that this was, that this was an error. So I didn't mean to specifically trick council by putting it into the proper account or anything along those lines, that wasn't my intention. I honestly didn't even know about it. I don't go into New World every day. I rely upon my budget and finance group to do that. Brian saw it, fixed it. I fully rely upon Brian and his team to fix any problems that come up here. Looking back on things, when that came up, that should have been brought to me and I should have brought to council. And that's how we'll handle these types of issues going forward. If I get the resolutions on time, then I will be, take a closer look at the, at the numbers to make sure that this is not in the situation again. So, okay, I appreciate your input.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, so to wrap this thing up, should we make another resolution to amend this resolution? Or how should we proceed at this point?
Well, what I thought, what I would do after the meeting, once we got through this agenda, is I will make a request to have an amended resolution with all the proper information and have it on the agenda for next week.
I think that that's the proper procedure to resolve this. And I just want to again reiterate that Mr. Swetts did on October 27th, there was dialogue about the error and there was a statement and a recommendation by Councilman Griffith to amend the resolution. And that's exactly what should have happened October 27th. And it should have, and that's why it should happen today or next week.
It'll be next week now. Okay. Mr. Griffith, you hear that?
Yep, yep. That's, and again, I kind of take a little bit of offense to Mr. Pedri's issue about, well, he's never been reprimanded in five years. Maybe, maybe it's, it's not the reprimand, it's the issue, it's the issue. We have to keep focused on the problem. And that's, and I know we've beaten this horse to death and it's long enough now to talk about it, but I just want to make it very clear that my issue is only the fact that when Mr. Swetts was doing the transfer to the wrong account, he should have immediately stopped what he was doing, walked up to Mr. Pedri and said, Mr. Pedri, this resolution is not correct. We need to address it. That's my concern and that didn't happen. And so that's the problems that we have when people within the government decide that they're just going to do whatever they want to do because it's the right thing to do. And whoever's, I mean, what if it was a resolution for something else? And Brian just decided to transfer to something else? That's the concern. So I'll leave it at that. There's no sense of beating this thing to death. I understand the point. I think everybody understands where we're going. And we'll just amend it and we'll move on to a new subject. Thank you very much.
Okay. It's now quarter after 11:00. Mr. Haas, I think you sent the email to everyone?
I did, I did, Mr. Chair.
And, yes, okay. Mr. Haas would like to entertain action to do an RFP for insurance brokerage.
Yes, sir.
And you sent that email to all the council in that regard. Do you have a quick comment, Mr. Haas?
I do, I do. You know, we had the insurance broker here last week, last meeting, and I was very specific in my request that I'd like to see everything on paper. You know, we got a report that was more like, like a weather report that, I would say, we wanted to get to this area, but you know, turns out the insurance was this much. And we aimed for this, but we were a thousand dollars off here. Not concerned with that. I want to see what are we getting for the taxpayer for the value? We had, if you read the resolution that I typed up there, you know, essentially it outlines the, what was required in the RFP that was issued last year, last September. And it seems like to me, unless I really get tangible reports here, it doesn't seem like it's being followed. The insurance premiums went up over 100% in just one year. We look at the overall cost of those line items, that's fully 1% of our entire general fund budget. It's a big chunk of coin and I, it just seems like it's, we're just dealing with this little flip. And we're just having an issue here about making sure that the correct channels are followed. You know, we're the county council, I just don't feel like we got a good report. So the council majority approved of this broker last year, even though the one we had was doing a very credible job. And now suddenly we're, it seems like we're taking a step back. So do I really want to go around and shop for more insurance? Well, no, I don't. But I think it's along the same lines what Councilman Griffith was just talking about. We have to hold the people accountable to work for the taxpayers. And it just seems like it just hasn't done, wasn't done at all. I'd like to see the deductibles, I want to see if that's increased, I want to see the premium breakdown. I mean, what value are we getting? So you can all read that, it's not very much pleasuring at all, but it just outlines the RFP, what we wanted to get out of that. And then it's, it says if we deem that we are not getting a good deal, as outlined in the RFP, we have the right to look elsewhere. So I just hope this also sends, again, a clear message that we just want the answers for the questions that we have.
Okay.
So thanks for the consideration for next voting session. I mean, I'd totally invite the firm to come and give a report or at least I'll email you. I mean, Mr. Chair, as you know, I waited for a whole week and God love you, you had to send the email out today. It's not your fault whatsoever because it was asked, but you know, you've got to have, do extra work now. So just a little frustrating, as usual, it's been a frustrating year.
I'll be happy to try to help, but you know, some of that information I don't have personally, but I'll definitely, like I said to your email, I'll definitely have some information for you.
Absolutely, no, not your fault whatsoever.
Well, yeah, I understand that part, but you know, the one thing I would say is, you know, obviously we did a RFP last year, we have a contract in place. Obviously, we had a very bad year relative to a lot of our insurance issues. And we're all well aware of that, I'm not going to repeat a lot of that. So there are factors. And when we get that information, hopefully tomorrow, we'll get it out. And maybe you and I'll have a little more discussion, Mr. Haas, once we get that information. Okay?
I appreciate it very much, thank you.
No problem, thank you. I think at that point, like I said, the division reports, you have those. If you have questions, please send those forward and we'll get some information for you. We have, we're going to open now for public comment. It's 20 after 11:00 and I would appreciate everybody's awareness of the hour so that we can hopefully move through this agenda because next week's meeting is going to be, as we all know, a very important meeting, you know, with the potential passage of the budget for 2021. So we're open for the public.
Chairman McGinley, Steve Urban, real quick.
Yes?
I'm, today I actually received a copy of the database from the Department of State. It's a data dump on the actual voters in Luzerne County. The date on the file is 11/30/2020. And when I do a filter on it, it's a little troublesome because it's only showing 57,504 voters that actually voted in our general election in Luzerne County. The last time it appears that I voted was actually in the primary, when I know I voted in November. So just to give management a heads up, I will be asking this question on Thursday to give you time to come up with an answer on why our records don't, aren't seemingly updated in the sure system. Because this is a voter history file 27 days after the election. You know, and it's been certified. So why isn't that data uploaded in the sure system from the Department of State?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. McGinley, Mr. McGinley, I just want to say to council, I'm going to have a motion next, at the next meeting for taking the, any budget amendments and putting them into a county reserve account, our county council reserve account, as opposed to giving a tax reduction to people in the county. I think it'd be better for us to have that in reserve. So that way next year, if we have to offset, if we have to offset anything for the 2022 budget, we'll have some money set aside rather than, because the amount of tax decrease will be miniscule and the taxpayers wouldn't even notice. But if we could, if we could put a million dollars in savings in the county council reserve account for next year, that would be helpful. So I just want council to know, I'll draft that and send it out for everybody before Friday.
I've already started that draft.
Everybody's on board with that, Walter.
Everybody.
Everybody's on board with that.
Yep. Like I said, I've already started that amendment for next week and that'll be one of the prime amendments that we have to deal with prior to the budget finalization.
Yep.
I do agree that, you know, our reserve, as you well know, it's not county council reserve, but it is a reserve that only can be moved by permission from county council, action by county council. So that will be, if you move it into reserve, it requires county council's action to move any money out of that reserve account to anywhere else. So we will be having that on the agenda, Walter. Okay?
Thank you so much. And before I forget, happy Hanukkah to our Juke's friends.
We have a public yet.
Thank you, Walter. I get eight presents, so.
Members of the public, we're open for comment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Okay, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be very brief. Number one, I would like for members of council, I hope that Mr. Chair you and the rest of the council would acknowledge the work of the redevelopment authority, months of work on the Stauffer Point Tiff, that all the hard work and due diligence that was done over the course of the fall and early winter. I hope that, you know, you would acknowledge that and the rest of the council would as well. And the second thing is, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Schnee on the development. And I hope to God, as somebody who lives in Hazelton City, and also I would acknowledge Councilman Urban's comments about, you know, trucking. And also I would add, heavy equipment operation training would be very vital considering there's a very high demand in those jobs and very little skilled persons that are certified because of the lack of, you know, experienced personnel. I know our county road and bridge, I think Mr. O'Neil would acknowledge that and our county manager. So I hope to God that the developer follows through and lives up to what he said he's going to do. I, as somebody who lives in the city, nothing would make me happier as somebody who's been a strong advocate for this, for Hazelton City for, for most of his life and the many years I've been coming to county council meetings. I hope that that happens. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and happy Hanukkah to Ms. Sideman.
Thank you.
Okay, other members of the public, please.
Brian Dwyer.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Brian Dwyer.
Go ahead, Mr. Dwyer.
I would just like to thank council for putting in the long hours tonight. I do appreciate it. I would also somewhat echo Mr. Raybo and Mr. Schnee. I am not that well versed on the issue in Hazelton, but from what I've heard tonight, I would be very interested in seeing further negotiations that would work out for the taxpayer and for the developer in a fair and equitable way. I, at this point in time, it would be my opinion, I wouldn't want to see this fall through just yet. I'm not going to give away the House to have it happen, but I would like to see more discussions on the matter. Thank you.
Other members of the public.
Mr. Manta.
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
I think this idea in Hazelton is a great idea, but I have another question in my mind that I have to ask. So the people in Hazelton want to have an acknowledgement from the county council in Luzerne County. But how come the people in Hazelton don't want to join with Luzerne County Transportation? That would maybe bring people to Hazelton to work in these places and bust them back and forth. So I mean, on one hand, it's, it's good in a way that they're going to develop a, an area that's been neglected. But on the other hand, why, why can't they just join with Luzerne County and Colts and join the rest of Luzerne County because they're part of it? And also I'd like to commend the people that voted, like I said, against the raise and the action that Walter's taking for putting the money away into a fund is great. It should be put into an interest-bearing fund so that that money that sits there is going to gain money from the money sitting there instead of a non-interest-bearing account so that it's, your money is going to be lazy, it's not going to make money. So all these accounts that they have for the county and every place else, if they're lazy accounts, they're not going to make money. If they're interest-bearing accounts, they're going to make money and earn money. I mean, that, that's banking one on one.
Okay.
But I have, okay, hold on, one second. I have to say, Cookie Lady, Cookie Lady.
Thank you.
Happy, happy Hanukkah, Cookie Lady.
Anyone else from the public? If not, we got one email today on our, uh, public comment email. And it's from Mr. Zomerfeld. He notes that he had an incident with a woman giving me her husband's medication. Ultimately, he wound up sick and was now slowly recovering. Long story short, he reported it to the DA's office. He took the medications in and the person who met him, he said basically laughed at him and told him to go to the local, uh, police. He tried several times. He got, finally got to the local police with the medication and the local policeman asked him, how do you know he didn't steal it? And he has a box loaded with the DA of the medication. And can he receive any help from county council? And I, he has his phone number there, but, uh, unfortunately I don't, county council doesn't deal with that, that part of it, I don't believe. Anyone else? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So move Sheila.
Second?
Second, Walter.
Second. Mr. Griffith, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposition, abstentions, unheard, motion carries. Stay healthy.
Yeah.
Uh, we're going to have a lengthy meeting next week, so, and I'll try very hard to get out the budget information as quickly as possible so everybody will have a chance to look at that part of it because it's a, you know, critical meeting for the budget. The 15th of December is our, is our sign on the budget, so, thank you.
One, somebody fell asleep, I think.